Okay, we're live.
Okay, great. All right, welcome. Can you bring the microphone?
No.
No. It has to be turned on.
Okay, there we go. Welcome to this public hearing of the New York City rent cap 24. This is the last of four public hearings to consider comments on proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, law offices, hotels, and other housing units subject to the rent stable edition law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect leases commencing between October 1st and September 30th, 2024. I will now hand take the call. Please respond to the President. Tom Apple.
Present.
And Sissi Kean.
Present.
Christina DeRose.
Present.
Robert Arrow.
Present.
Arby Gupta.
Present.
Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith. And Don Soltran.
Present.
Nestor Davidson.
Present.
The record shows that we have a court. The next meeting of this court will be for our final vote. The meeting will take place on Wednesday, June 21st, starting at 7:00 p.m. at Hunter College Assembly Hall, 69th Street, between Park and Lexington Avenues in Manhattan, with doors opening at 6:00 p.m. Please note the change in venue from the Great Hall at Cooper Union. The public may attend and observe the meeting in person or may watch the vote live by streaming it on the RGV's YouTube channel. To find out how, visit the RGV website, nyc.gov/rgv, or call the RGV at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Before we proceed with testimony, I'd like to briefly go over the rules and procedures for testifying before the Board.
Can we put the volume up, please?
Sure. Brian, is there someone to turn the volume up?
I don't know where the sound person is.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, apologize for that. I will try to speak more clearly into the mic. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
If you heighten the higher frequency, maybe.
Okay. Okay. My students tell me I can be heard in the back of a room, but I'll try. Can't hear you. Okay. Okay, give us a moment, apologies. Okay. Can anybody hear me back there? No, still local? Okay. Apologies, it's a little bit loud, but I think it's better than everybody able to hear me. Okay. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for testifying before the Board. If you wish to speak, please confirm your presence with the RGV staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There are Spanish interpreters here today. While registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance in order to let you know that you will soon be called on to speak. Please come to the mic when I call you. It will help us hear from everyone. If you have materials to distribute to the Board, please get them to the RGV staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will alternate speakers between tenants and others as much as possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony, with an additional two minutes of speaking time to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To keep speakers, to help speakers keep track of time, we have a clock right over there, which we will start when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once you have 30 seconds left, and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony out of respect for other speakers here tonight. It is great that we are expecting many speakers tonight, but the Board very much wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have. This venue closes at 10:00 p.m., so please keep that in mind as an outer limit we all need to keep in mind together. We will also take a break at the two-hour mark, but we will keep breathing. I understand that it could be challenging to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand we would like to hear everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify, giving them a fair opportunity to be heard. Thank you so much for your cooperation, and the Board is looking forward to hearing from you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines.
Bienvenidos a todos a esta edición pública de la junta de normas del alquiler y relación de morallado. Esta es la última de cuatro audiencias públicas en la que se tomarán en consideración los comentarios sobre los ajustes al alquiler de propuestos, ahora los contactos al alquiler de apartamentos, más huantillos, hoteles y otras viviendas sujetas a la ley de estabilización de alquileres de 1969, y la ley de protección de alquedinos en situaciones de emergencia de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán a los alquileres que comiencen entre el 1º de octubre de 2023 y el 30 de septiembre de 2024. Ahora pasa la lista, por favor repiten si están presentes. David Apple presente, Genesis Aquino presente, Christina DeRose presente, Robert Turett presente, Arby Gupta presente, Alex Schwartz presente, Christina Smith presente, Adam Solfr presente, Nestor Jerson presente. El acta que contamos con un cuadro. La próxima de esta junta será para nuestra votación final. La reunión se celebrará el 21 de junio a partir de las 7 de la noche en Hunter College Assembly Hall en la calle 69, entre las avenidas Park y Lexington de Manhattan, y las puertas se abrirán a las 6 de la tarde. Notablemente, el cambio del local de the Great Hall en Cooper Union. El público puede asistir observando la reunión en persona o dando una votación directo. Es a transmitir en el canal de YouTube de la RGV. Para saber cómo hacerlo, consulte la página web de la RGV, nyc.com/rgv, diagonal RGV o llama a la RGV 226697480 entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para declarar ante la junta. Si usted desea declarar, deberá confirmar su presencia el personal de la RGV en la mesa de inscripción situada cerca de la entrada de la sala. Usted no se le llevará a declarar sin antes haber confirmado su presencia en la mesa de inscripción. O bien tendremos interpretaciones españolas, y cuando se inscribe para hablar, por favor notifique al personal si desea interpretar. Intentaré llamar varios nombres con alteración para hacerles saber que pronto le tocará hablar, de suerte que se acerquen de cualquier forma cuando les llame, pues esto nos ayudará con los sus opiniones. Si cuenta con material para distribuir a la junta, por favor entregue al personal de la RGV sentado en la mesa de inscripción cerca de la entrada. En la medida de lo posible, alternaré los hablantes entre alquedinos y correntarios. Con el fin de dar mayor número posible de hablantes, cada uno contará con dos minutos para dar su testimonio, con dos minutos más de tiempo de uso de la palabra, para aquellos hablantes que utilicen los servicios de interpretación. Para llegar a los hablantes a controlar su tiempo, contamos con un temporizador. Ese comprar en marcha cuando usted empiece a hablar. El temporizador sonará cuando queden 30 segundos y se irá sonando cuando se haya agotado los dos minutos asignados. Si sigue hablando al final de los dos minutos, lo que diré que concluya rápidamente su testimonio con respecto a otros hablantes aquí presentes esta noche. Es fenomenal que esperemos a muchos hablantes, y la junta desea mucho que se escuche el mayor número posible de hablantes en el tiempo limitado del que disponemos. Este local cierra a las 10 de la noche, así que les juramos que lo que venga en cuenta como una limitación externa, que debemos tener presente entre todos. También tomaremos una pausa cuando hayan pasado dos horas, sin embargo, esta pausa será breve. Entiendo que puede ser poco que decir todo lo que quiere que hagamos en solo dos minutos, pero reúnan que comprendan que nos gustaría escuchar a todas las personas que se hayan tomado el tiempo de venir acá y declarar, y de darles una oportunidad justa de que se les escuche. Muchas gracias por su cooperación, la junta es ansiosa por conocer sus opiniones, opiniones sobre las normas propuestas para el ajuste de los alquileres. Muchas gracias.
Our first speaker will be Assembly Member Deborah Blake. Thank you.
In fact, let me just say that according to the most recent income and affordability report by the Rent Guidelines Board, rent stabilized tenants have a median gross rent-to-income ratio of 36%, meaning the majority of rent stabilized tenants are not able to afford their apartments already, and yet this year, the Rent Guidelines Board is proposing they pay more. In 2022, we saw an increase of 3.25% for one-year leases and 5% for two-year leases. This was the biggest jump in rent since 2013, and this year, you're proposing further increases between 2 and 5% for one year and between 4 and 7 for two-year leases. New York's rent stabilized housing stock decreased by 66,000 units that we have not recovered, and another 60,000 to 80,000 units have been artificially held off the market, escalating rents and adding to the housing crisis. And median rents in Manhattan have increased by 12% in this last year across the board. People cannot afford the apartments they have, they can't afford these increases, and we already have people facing evictions. I'm going to take 10 seconds more because I couldn't adjust my screaming voice. Anyway, let me just say that people are going to face evictions, people cannot afford the apartments they have, and while we are sympathetic to some of the smaller owners, private equity firms are buying up and forcing people out of their apartments using unscrupulous means of harassment. And we cannot allow more people to lose their housing because we cannot add to the homelessness problem that is already choking our city. Please, please think about the quality of life that people see eroding before them. I will leave my real testimony with your votes.
Can we get the sound person back?
I'll look for him.
Thank you, apologies. That's going to, it's still a little low though, isn't it?
Try, we'll get, we'll get the volume up here.
Robert, you'll come save us. Thank you.
Testing, 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 testing. Oh, we got a screaming.
Give us a moment, please. Thank you, sorry.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing. I don't, I don't know what's going on here. Yeah, so I guess, can you hear me in the back? All right, I'm going to try my best to be as loud as possible. So, good evening, members of the Board. I am Councilmember Alexa D. that's representing District 38, South Brooklyn Sunset Park Red Hook. It's largely working class, and while so many of my neighbors could not be here tonight, although we do roll deep and we have quite a number here to offer testimony, please know that my testimony represents the views of thousands of rent stabilized tenants across my district and, as you, I know you have heard, across the city. After a year where our community saw unprecedented increases to the cost of living across the board, including food, utilities, with no corresponding wage increases, for the Rent Guidelines Board to consider rent hikes ranging as high as 7% is egregious and worse, cruel. Landlords across this city are in the business of renting precisely because of their ability to make a profit. So I have no sympathy when the specter of thinning profit margin is raised, especially when compared to the tenants who have faced double-digit increases in evictions and just last year, sure to rise with yet another rent hike from the RGV. I especially shed no tears for landlords when it is my office that hundreds of tenants from our district and other districts have sought help when landlords, despite rent increases, have not made the necessary repairs or provided basic maintenance. With a board that is quite transparently stacked by City Hall with appointees, let me be clear that destabilizing nearly 1 million households is contrary to any supposed plan on behalf of this administration to tackle the housing crisis in this city and to alleviate the current burden on our shelter system. I urge this Board to keep our neighbor's house, to not fan the filaments of income inequity simply to maintain profit margins to the decimal, and to give New Yorkers a moment to breathe after a year of staggering increases. Please reject these increases, keep 1 million New Yorkers in stable and secure housing. If there ever was a time for a rent rollback, this is it. Landlords have assets, values, and assets, nothing to borrow from, no supplemental assets, no food and other basic necessities. We have to make hard choices every day in this city. We need this Board to not only make a hard choice, but to do the right thing.
Next speaker, Councilmember Sidney Gabon.
Can you all hear me? Hello, my name is Sidney Gabon. I, my pronouns are she/her, I am the Councilmember in the 22nd District in Queens, includes Astoria, Rikers Island, parts of Eastona, Woodside, and Jackson Heights. I want to begin looking at the housing system as a whole and be clear about where I stand on the issue. Housing is a human right.
That's right.
A comfortable, reliable home is the essential pillar of a dignified life and a key foundation of true public safety, not to mention public health. Community health and dignity cannot be fully achieved under our current model of profit-driven housing, one that dwarfs community vitality and prosperity. Since housing is a basic human need, we should support housing, a housing system that guarantees housing rather than one that boosts the profits for a wealthy community. Since housing is a basic human need, we should guarantee it as a basic human right, period. We should not have a system that welcomes real estate speculators into our city to use when they draft from everyday families to cover the loan that they took out, a cycle that leads to tax write-offs for the rich, rapid turnover of building ownership, and lower housing quality for everyday New Yorkers. And after eleven, a global pandemic and ensuing economic downturn, New Yorkers cannot afford more rent. The economy builds up, grocery builds up, it is unconscionable to raise New Yorkers' rents as well. And as the affordability crisis surges, many New Yorkers struggle to provide for their families and neighbors' needs. A recent report found that half of all city households do not make enough to meet the minimum cost of living. Nearly 80% of households are housing burden, which means more than 30% of household income is going towards rent. Our housing stock should be only controlled democratically, not used as a commodity to be traded, and this is the future we're fighting for, when our housing system serves this primary purpose to provide dignified shelter for all who, for all, for as long as they live here, a city where no one has to go unhoused because of lack of resources or lack of access. And so the Rent Guidelines Board should pass a rent increase of no more than 0%, and that is a moderate compromise. Really, the compounding price of our city is a virgin loan, and it's aimed at reaching lower rents. Really, we should overhaul our housing system so that our housing stock is controlled on a democratic basis. And really, we should think of our home guarantee that treats housing as the human right it is. And so, members of the Rent Guidelines Board, freeze the rent, better yet, issue a rent rollback. Good evening. And I think folks can hear me. I'm Councilmember Shahana Hanif, and I think you can imagine what my remarks will look like. And I appreciate the colleagues who came before me because I echo the same sentiments in demanding a rent rollback. I was among councilmembers of the Progressive Caucus in the New York City Council at last month's meeting, hand in hand with rent stabilized tenants, with our leading advocates in the housing rights movement, taking on the stage to remind you that this is a city of renters. This is a city of renters. Last month, we had to take the stage to remind you that, in this moment, New Yorkers are struggling. It shouldn't take us occupying the stage to show you what they are experiencing, what their living conditions have been. It is unconscionable, I'm befuddled, perplexed, that you all have the audacity, the audacity to say, "These New Yorkers don't belong." That these New Yorkers, we will abandon them. That these New Yorkers don't deserve care from New York City. So I want to vocalize that you all have been disrespectful to us. Leaders from FAC to Fabu Committee in my district, I want to honor all the organizing that is happening and that will continue to happen, irrespective of what you all decide. But just know, this is just the beginning. Workers will continue to organize, renters will continue to organize, and legislators will be on our side.
Our next speaker will be Councilmember Chi Ose.
Hello again to the RGV. Can you guys hear me? I'm New York City Councilmember Chi Ose, representing Vensai and Crown Heights, which is a rapidly gentrifying neighborhood here in Brooklyn. I stand before you to testify against increasing the cost to tenants of remaining in their homes. But before I start, I want to ask you, is 7% stabilizing? Who's that stabilizing for? As countless tenants will tell you this evening, that New Yorkers are suffocating under skyrocketing living costs, the proposed increases could be a breaking point. And let's be clear about the severity of what this means. Increasing rents will break homes, it will shatter stability for working families, it will drive New Yorkers out of the neighborhoods they have called home for generations, it will make people homeless. Let's not take that lightly. Driving families into homelessness is an act of violence that will permanently traumatize children. It will fuel suffering, it will ruin lives and lead to early death, and it's a choice. This Board has the unique power to throw millions of New Yorkers a lifeline. Families in the city make agonizing choices between food and healthcare because their last dollar each month is swallowed by rent. This Board can make an easy choice and say increased homelessness is too high a price to just pay to make corporate landlords a little bit richer. The landlords here are speaking in bad faith. We know this is bad faith because even in years of historically low inflation, even in years in which costs remain flat, even in years where increased rents may only increase profits, each and every year, they come before the Board insisting they need maximum increases. This isn't about inflation, it's about greed. Just as we do every single year, landlords arrive before this Board looking to squeeze tenants the last drop. The renters testifying here today are committing an act of self-defense. In the question between enriching corporate landlords and keeping children and families in their own homes, let's understand that one option is violence and the other is survival. Now I ask this Board, to spare New York's families from the threat of homelessness, I ask you to recognize the desperation of the people in this room struggling to keep their heads above water. The consequences of this decision are dire. We need you to make the right one and keep the rent down. Not only that, but we need rent rollbacks in the city for New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next three speakers, our next three speakers are Ronald and Kate, Hans Tate, and Josh Yudavala. All right, Mr. Tate? Our new first speaker is all right now.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello? I want those who find no sleepless, hungry for twenty years. It's where I brought my son home from the hospital. He's going to testify now. Okay, sorry. We urge you not to raise the match. A few percentage points may not seem like a lot to some people. In fact, for the owners of our building, it would be negligible. They own a nasty building. They have a long history of violations also for unsafe conditions. In our apartment, they disconnected our heat, padlocked our emergency exit, and installed a exhaust fence into our air shafts. I'm fighting them in housing court for safe and affordable housing for my family and my neighbor's family, who've lived in our building for 40 years. So a few percentage points for us is a big deal. My husband works in a hospital. He was on the front lines in the COVID wars during the whole pandemic. He gets two checks a month, and one of them goes to rent. If you raise the match even a few percentage points, it would force many essential workers of my husband to risk their own lives to get our city through the pandemic, to move out of New York. out of New York or into their shelters that are already overflowing. Many of the members of my community garden, where Shaana Hanif comes in time, would have to leave behind the rose bushes we planted and tended all these years. After all the neighborhood cleanups and block parties we organized, we would have to say goodbye to the brave willow tree we watered and watched flow talk. And children like my son would have to leave their schools, say goodbye to their friends and teachers, pack up their toys, and clear their room one last night.
Thank you.
All right. I'm a little nervous. Can you get like a piece off? I'm ready. So the reason we saw not raise the rent is because I love my house. Do you love your house? So, do we like seeing homeless people? All right, I'm just gonna say a little louder, okay? All right, dawg. Do you love your house? Are you a sucker? All right. All I want to do is give a shout out to three of my friends. All right, Apollo, M W, and Clint.
There's a lot of people standing up. Maybe if we had space next to you, just sit in the middle so that people can sit, because there's a lot of people standing. And there is space here in the front line, for all.
Can you see it over here? Thank you. Dutch to Garbalo.
Good evening. My name is Dutch. My name is Dutch Garbalo, and I'm a lifelong New Yorker, a proud New York City public school teacher, and I live in rent stabilized, affordable housing. I am here to ask the board to vote no on the increases and instead roll back the rent. And while you are there, say then to preserve our rent stabilized housing, we must balance the needs of the landlords and the tenants. You have done an incredible job of creating an illusion of hardship and challenge for these landlords. The landlords are suffering, you say. I'm wondering, is it the same rent stabilized landlords who according to your own data have seen a 50% profit increase in the past 30 years that are suffering? Or is it the ones holding on to 60,000 apartments? Or perhaps it's the ones who get countless tax breaks and are now processing evictions at the highest rate in years? I don't know what landlord you're talking about, but I do know as tenants, we don't need to create any illusions of hardships. The majority of rent stabilized tenants are rent burdens. Most of my childhood friends have not moved out of their homes and still live at home. The only way I would dare to move out is because I got affordable housing. As Mitchell Ramus privatized, NYCHA falls into further disrepair, and the so-called affordable lottery apartments continue to rise in cost, rent stabilization is one of the few programs which can still help tenants, or at least it's supposed to. I'm not so sure when you got a board appointed by a landlord mayor. I know you convince yourself that the landlords are struggling and that that trouble is somehow our responsibility. It's embarrassing that you believe that the people who check out your groceries and serve you in restaurants and teach your children, it's embarrassing that you can be irresponsible for the profits of landlords and shameful that you bought into that rhetoric. As you make your choice, because it is a choice, will you choose to protect the hundreds and thousands of New Yorkers who make this city run, or will you choose to be cowards and protect the belief landlords just promised will never be enough?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bida Joseph, and I'm in Council for the 40th District, rep, proudly representing Flatbush, PLG, Kensington, Dickis Park, and Southern Crown Heights. Now, if you can hear, I'm here with my advocates, my colleagues, the everyday New Yorkers, and the rent is too damn high already. And something else to be done about that. This is a beautiful city, however, the cost of living has skyrocketed. 10% of our students, when I was a teacher, was living in shelters. That should tell you something. That's 114,000 students living in shelters. That means they could not live in affordable homes. And here you are, today wanting to raise the rent on these families. Shame on you. New Yorkers that live on margins of being squeezed out of our homes. And we saw that last year. 200,000 of our black neighbors left New York City because they could not afford to live here. That's a shame. Earlier this year, again, in fact, more than 75% of our rent stabilized tenants identify as Black, Latinx, Asians, and it's why I'm deeply troubled to learn that the guidelines is considering raising the rent again. And many of my colleagues, my neighbors, and my friends and families are here today to say no. We don't want this. No, no way should you raise the rent on us. We are just getting out of a pandemic, and we're moving people out of their homes, and this is unacceptable. Today, I'm here to raise my voice for my neighbors, my kids that I taught today that are living in shelters that did not speak today. Do not raise the rent, or we'll score our children and our families. 100,000 families are being evicted every single day. We have no space in our shelters, so we must make sure that we do everything in our power to keep our families in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Jenny Laurie, Catherine Salazar, and David Speranza. Jenny Laurie, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Laurie. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Court Answers, a nonprofit that provides assistance to tenants facing eviction in Housing Court. We run information panels and we run a hotline. We're getting over 300 calls a day now because we're in an eviction crisis from tenants who are facing eviction for non-payment of rent. The situation is more serious than it was prior to the pandemic. Obviously, the moratorium slowed things down, but today, more tenants are calling our hotline who are rent stabilized, who could get rent arrears assistance if they can afford the ongoing rent, but more and more of them are paying over 30, 40, and 50% of their income for rent. We screened over 1,400 rent stabilized tenants over the past year. Sorry. Who basically needed rent arrears assistance because they're facing eviction. They have rent stabilized apartments, so they have a promise of a lease renewal, but they can barely afford their rents. So I would urge you to consider that in your guideline decisions and think of all the tenants who are facing, over 100,000 tenants now facing eviction in New York City.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Salazar, and I live at Southern Fort Gatlin Place. This is my first apartment with my husband, and we are approaching our first year of living in that apartment. We pay more than 30% of my household income on rent alone. I want to be able to stay in my current apartment because I want to grow a new family. I want to create a home with my husband. Based on the preliminary vote, my rent would go up for a one-year lease between $30 to $75, and a two-year lease between $60 to $105. This would mean that my husband and I won't be able to afford my rent. My husband works in his family business in a local pizzeria, and I'm a religious coordinator at my local church. Even with two incomes, I will not be able to afford my rent. Over half of rent stabilized tenants pay more than 30% of their income. Low-cost apartments are disappearing while more high-priced units are being created. Between 2017 and 2021, the city lost 96,000 units with rents less than 1,500. Median rent stabilized household income was 47,000 compared to 62,960 for the market rate tenants. While landlords complain about hard times, they're mostly talking about a couple of years ago, and even then, the data is mixed. Between 2021 and 2022, landlords mostly saw the rate of rent collection rise, particularly in the Bronx, Center Harlem. The average net operating income is $576 per unit per month for law, for cost-to-income ratio for 62.2%. This produces a hypothetical average stabilizing building annual of a NOI of 322,300. Several neighborhoods saw the NOI increase, including North Shore, Staten Island, East Flatbush, and Fresh Meadows Queens. The grant paid the tenants $1.8 billion to NYC landlords.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm here to demand that this board take the sign of justice. We are all people of faith and want faith. Tenants are hardworking New Yorkers. We deserve fairness.
David Speranza. And while David's coming down, our next three speakers will be Fabian Bravo, Zachary Hale, and Natalia Marquez.
Hello. I live in rent stabilized housing. I'm a modest living as a musician. My wife is a public servant. And as artists and city workers, I like to thank the people, along with all the other working people of New York City, the teachers, the nurses, the line cooks, and the cashiers, the lumbermen, the count drivers, and the countless millions who put in their time to serve other New Yorkers. These are the people that make this a great place to live. In a city known for having the best of everything, we must acknowledge that none of that is built from the bedrock. The world-class public communities of New York are a product of labor. So when the working people of New York, most of whom already struggle with the high cost of housing, face becoming increasingly rent burdened, we risk pushing out and losing the very people who are the source of all value in these five boroughs. So, if you're a landlord and you've decided that you can't turn enough surplus profit from your buildings to make it worth you while, then my advice to you is to do what so many of us here tonight have already done. Get a real job!
Sube, sube, y el huevo sube, sube! Hola buenas tardes! Que la chingada! That's a switch. Mi nombre es Fabian, vivo en San Jose, Puerto Rico, en Nueva York. Son mi amigos vecinos ayudando a vecinos.
My name is Fabian Bravo. I live in San Jose, Puerto Rico, and I am a member of Neighbors, Public Neighbors.
No solamente es una habitación, es un edificio. Es una habitación, llena de momentos de mucha felicidad. Mis hijos han vivido en ese apartamento. Les hemos cantado las mañanitas en sus cumpleaños, y juntos hemos planeado los regalos de la vida todas las noches. Son gasos afectivos dentro de ese apartamento.
It's not just an apartment in a building. It's an apartment filled with happy memories. My kids have grown up in this apartment. We've sung to them a happy birthday on their birthdays, and we've planned our future goals at night. There are effective ties within that apartment.
En cambio, la gentrificación está ocasionando el desplazamiento y el desarrollo de la comunidad.
However, gentrification is causing displacement and eviction in the community.
El aumento en la renta se está justificando por falsos reportes. Lo peor de todo es que lo saben y aún así apoyan este aumento.
The rent increase is being justified with false reports, and the worst of this is that this is already known and it is still being supported.
Yo pido a la junta de defensas que ponga la justicia, la solidaridad, que la pondan encima de esta injusta compuesta de aumento.
I ask the RGV to please implement justice, solidarity, and goodness about this unfair increase proposal.
El derecho a la vivienda debe ser puesto en práctica desde este mismo momento. Apoyando el amor de la comunidad, la misma amor de la comunidad que día a día ha levantado esta ciudad en Nueva York.
The right to live must be put into practice from this very moment, supporting the voice of the community, the city community, that every day has raised this city of New York.
La comunidad levantó y mantuvo movimiento a esta ciudad en movimientos tan difíciles como la pandemia.
The community lifted up and kept this city moving in times as difficult as during the pandemic.
Mis hijos, sus hijos, se merecen el derecho y el privilegio de una vivienda hasta el alcance de sus ingresos.
My children and their children deserve the right and the privilege of affordable housing.
Lo que pedimos es lo justo, un 0%. Lo que pedimos es lo justo. Pedimos un 0%.
What we are asking for is just. We ask for a 0% increase. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Zachary Hale? Zachary Hale?
0%! 0%! 0%! 0%! 0%! 0%! 0%! 0%!
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Zach Hale. I'm a tenant's rights lawyer with Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation, A. I want to say first, I know the Rent Guideline Board has a hardworking staff that have put together hundreds of pages of research ahead of these hearings, but respectfully, the experts on housing in New York City are in this room right now. But the tenants that speak at these hearings can tell you how a rent stabilized apartment is the cornerstone of so many families' stability, and how a rent increase lays the groundwork for eviction, for displacement. Those are policy choices that are made by this guideline board, will be made by vote next week. And so I hope that you're taking this opportunity to listen to all of the tenants who have told you the stories about a city that's still unrecovered. But we know that the Rent Guideline Board researched- But we know that the Rent Guideline Board research shows the same thing. We have unemployment that's above COVID levels. We have rent burdens that are as high as they've been in years since 2014. We have surging shelter homelessness for the first time in four years. I mean, those things are connected. And at the same time, owning a rent-stabilized apartment remains highly profitable. You've heard people say fifty percent increase in income over the last thirty years. Here in Brooklyn, it's a hundred and seventy-one percent increase in income. That's according to the Rent Guideline Board research. However, as I've said, the best research that you can do and that I appreciate you are doing is to listen to the tenants that are here. And they are clear on what the rent increase should be and what we as a city can take. And so we are asking you to consider, as you make the policy choice that we made, whether you put more of a burden on those who are just recovering from a crisis or take a little bit out of the pocket margin of a handful of investors. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalia Marquez. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant. I'm a member of eighteen thirty-four Kaden Avenue Association of Flatbush. And I'm at the level of authority of social and liberation. And I'm going to start with a few quick questions. Who here is a tenant? Who here got seven percent raise this year? Who here is facing potentially seven percent rent increases this year? It's clear that we're all affected by inflation. Why should our landlords get a raise while we get nothing? I don't know if there's money for repairs, but our landlords are already rich. They get money from our paychecks every single month, but we as rent-stabilized tenants, we're not getting repairs that we need. Who here lives in a parking with cockroaches? Who here lives in a garden with leaking hoses? With a faulty elevator with repairs that never get done? I didn't take a cold shower before work this morning. Several nights this year, I woke up in the middle of the night because there were cockroaches between my sheets. One of my neighbors only gets hot water in her bathroom. That's right, not cold water, just hot water. That means that every time she tries to shower, she burns herself. It's unfair, and yet we're seeing these seven percent increases anywhere like they need more and more hundred money. And I just want to ask, who here voted for a seven percent increase? Who here voted for any of these nine people standing in front of us?
Not me!
That's right. So we're two point four million rent-stabilized tenants in this city, and not a single one of us gets to vote on our rent increases? Maybe that could be life or death for us. And not a single one of us even gets to vote for the nine people that decide all these rent increases, right? Where God might forbid, that decides the favor of two point four million tenants needs to be represented by tenants that are made up of tenants. Because landlords know they're represented. They don't even have to show their faces here. Actually, they're too blind to show their faces here. It's all the people who are there. Fight, fight, fight!
Our next three speakers will be Kefron Salam, Brianna Solon, and Whitney King.
Hello. My name is Kefron, and I'm a tenant at eighteen thirty-four Kaden Avenue, along with my friends Natalia and Brianna. I live with my three roommates, and I pay nine hundred and ninety-one dollars a month to rent a room in our apartment. I should not be paying nine hundred and ninety-one dollars a month with three roommates in a rent-stabilized apartment. And for those saying that sounds like decent rent in Brooklyn, you must understand that my rent is not financially possible for the majority of New Yorkers. I make more than almost fifty percent of New Yorkers, and I do not support anyone on my salary. Imagine if I had children or elderly family members to take care of. I would never be able to afford that rent. I can buy now, but I do still live paycheck to paycheck. And now the Rent Guideline Board plans on increasing the rent of all rent-stabilized buildings. Is the assumption that all of us get yearly raises? How are you raising our rent prices to match inflation when our salaries don't even do that? Not only do we have to worry about the increasing prices of groceries, about feeding ourselves, but now we have to worry about whether we'll have a roof over our heads the next round of rent increases because of a decision made by the board that isn't even democratically You are elected by the mayor. You do not serve us. The majority of New Yorkers are renters, so how come we only have two representatives for the tenants? And how come the elects that represent us, the public, never actually do so? The public showed up to the last hearing. The public demanded a rollback. And yet somehow we're here discussing a seven percent increase? New Yorkers cannot afford that. From inflation to the slashing of social service budgets, everything that is supposed to provide us a safe nap is being cut. How is it rent-controlled if it goes up every year? There are plenty of empty vacant units in the city, and yet we have a homeless crisis. We get caught up in fake conversations around needing to build more affordable housing that isn't actually affordable. We don't need more housing. We just need to use the already existing housing to host people instead of holding empty vacant units hostage to create a myth of scarcity and to allow landlords to jack up the prices. What is being done to us is unjust, and we're not going to stand for it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brianna. I'm testifying in solidarity with my neighbors at eighteen thirty-four Kaden Avenue, all of my Flatbush neighbors and tenants across New York City because we need a rent rollback, not a rent increase. We've all had to endure a significant and historic rent increase in the last year, and it hasn't been easy. New Yorkers are still reeling and lashing this on top of increases in our food, in our healthcare, and basic necessities. I go to Housing Court every week, and we see every week how Housing Court is run as a tool for eviction and displacement. Landlords have every institutional tool on their side to make a profit and displace longtime New Yorkers. People are overwhelmed and are struggling to stay in their homes. We should now hold a struggle equal to landlord profits. Our priority as a city needs to be keeping tenants in their homes, our neighborhoods stable, and not letting the pockets of landlords. Why should they be guaranteed profit year over year as tenants suffer under stagnant wages and rising inflation? We should not be okay with the status quo anymore, and we need a rent rollback. And we also need the RGD to reflect the working-class tenants of New York.
While Zachary's coming down, I'll announce the next three speakers. Ross Levin, Eric Scarlett, and Nicholas Holmer. Thank you.
My name is Whitney Hu, and I'm the Director of City Engagement and Research at Churches United for Fair Housing, otherwise known as CUP. And I'm also a friend of Dan Lightman. We specialize in home housing services, and we work with a church network across Brooklyn and Queens. The members and congregations we serve and work with are primarily Black, Brown, immigrant, and working class. I'm actually here with some of our members, but they're still in line outside. We have twenty folks, including families. And the line is still wrapped around the block. What we're really leaving here is just the streets of Brooklyn. And when I look around this room, I've cried like three times already, and I wish some of you showed some more emotions in the testimonies that we're hearing. But it is intergenerational. It is diverse, and I'm so proud of the many young people that are here because we're fighting for our futures to stay in the communities that we love. I stand today asking for a miracle, a miracle that you have the power to help me achieve. And I say that knowing that I'm not the only one praying for that miracle. Right now, most New Yorkers are in survival mode, and I know that you can feel it and steal it, see it. It's like landlords aren't here, it's like security is out of the wazoo. They know landlords aren't here because they know that their neighbors and communities are hurting, but they're prioritizing their profits over the humanity of their tenants. CUP's service sites are packed every day, and we have more members receiving eviction notices than at any other time in our decade-long history. Raising the rents again would be more evictions, more people who are homeless, and it might mean the trade-off of their ability to buy groceries, pay their utilities, buy new clothes for their kids for the school year, whatever it takes to survive. I'm urging the board today to do the right thing and to use our power to protect tenants, families, children, seniors, and our communities. The moral right thing would be to issue a rent rollback because rents should have never been raised last year. If there are minimums of these eviction notices, and finally, I just want to name our tenant members, Adon and Genesis. I know you guys are back there fighting for us. We see you, we hear you, we're with you.
Hi, my name is Ross Levin. I live in a rent-stabilized apartment in South Slope, and we need to freeze or roll back rents. Last year, I left my apartment when the landlord said it wasn't rent-stabilized to avoid going to Housing Court and being blacklisted, which does still exist. I had to move. I was lucky enough to find a rent-stabilized apartment, but I lost my neighborhood where I had lived for many years. I pay more now, and until you've been forced to move, you don't understand how traumatic and disruptive that can be. And every percentage point that you raise the rent, it will be disrupting and traumatizing more New Yorkers like that: families, working people, the people who got us through the pandemic. A five or seven percent increase would displace thousands of families. I'm a law student, and about half of my cost of living loans go to my rent. And I'm here to stand in solidarity with people who have a lot less as well. And Professor Davidson, you were my professor. You taught me that you have to look at what is the statutory authority of an administrative board, and that's what you said when I asked you about this in a more private setting. And it's in your power to freeze the rents. It's been done by this board before, and it's in your power to roll back the rents. That's a fact behind the supposed neutrality of the law. This is a political choice that will affect billions of people. But the last thing to quickly is that I know there were some public concerns about violence from tenants or threats from tenants. The only threat of violence here tonight is the threat of eviction.
Thank you.
Two, four, four students. So my name is Eric. I'm rising as a tenant in a rent-stabilized unit, a ten-eating building in Fort Greene. I just want to put the real complexity issue at the forefront, which is what my rent would be different under these increases in the next couple of years. So the range that you proposed, my rent would increase from what I'm paying today in our apartment, three hundred and fifty-five to four hundred and forty-two dollars per I am, I just graduated law school. I am working as a lawyer. I'm rent-burdened. I pay more than fifty percent of my take-home pay to rent. And I know that there are certain things that you have to consider, things like landlords' property taxes in my building, for public information. I know that my landlord pays about two thousand two hundred dollars a year in taxes. A year, that's less than half of my monthly rent because he gets the J-51 tax abatement. He doesn't maintain very much of anything. We have to fight him for everything. He didn't remediate the mold, he just painted over it. He fought tooth and nail against fixing his appliances. He asked me to pay him to fix his appliances. We know that there's a lot of talk about interest rates right now and inflation. Most economists this year are expecting a recession, and they're expecting usually in a recession, there's deflation, but that never seems to be talked about when we talk about rent increases and decreases. And the last point that I'll make is that Albany has failed us. They said that they were going to pass a housing compact. They failed. This board is the last line of defense for tenants in New York City. You cannot raise rent. You must freeze it, roll it back, or go at the absolute minimum that you propose.
Alex Schwartz, you look bored. Don't fall asleep again.
Thank you.
My name is Nick. I've been a rent-stabilized tenant in Washington Heights for seven years with my partner Jack. He can't be here today because he's a teacher, a public school teacher in the city. He's a bit disturbing visions to your children right now. There are over a hundred families living in my building alone, mostly Hispanic, many multi-generational, a lot of people don't feel comfortable showing up and talking here today, who built their life here around the security that rent stabilization promised them, the ability to renew their leases year after year at affordable rent. But today, that promise is in peril because landlords have put profits over people. Landlords claim to be financially distressed. They claim they're struggling, and they need a rent increase to keep up the maintenance or utility costs or something like that. But we know that's a lie because it isn't landlords we see filling the homeless shelters across New York. It is the landlords who struggle to put food on their table and pay their bills on time. And we don't see landlords working two to three jobs to support their family and send their kids to college. For landlords, our homes are just another piece in their portfolios. And despite their financial distress, landlords like mine own over a hundred and fifty buildings in New York City and have spent millions, millions in the past few years acquiring new properties and expanding their portfolios at unprecedented rates, a detail I'm sure they omitted to this board. Landlords like mine are sophisticated actors in a regulated market. If they fail to diversify their portfolios accordingly, that sounds like the investors' problem, not ours. I urge this board to reject these landlords' false claims of financial distress and pass a rent rollback to ensure that over a million rent-stabilized households can continue to afford living, working, and raising families in this great city.
Our next two speakers will be Pinklin McHatter, Samantha Lawler, and Angie Lang.
I'll start off with a quote from Health Member Alex Schwartz in his 2010 book. In 2008, federal expenditures for direct housing assistance totaled less than forty point two billion, while homeowner assistance, which includes landlords, by the way, exceeded one hundred and seventy-one billion dollars. while homeowner assistance, which includes landlords, by the way, exceeded $171 billion."
My name is Caitlin Penner. And I'm a rent-stabilized tenant living in a J-51 building in Brooklyn, Brooklyn. I worked for City in graduate school for urban planning at Hunter, preparing for a lifelong career in city service where I'll never make more than $80,000, $70,000 a year. But even though I have three roommates who live in a rent-stabilized building, I still pay more than 40% of my income towards rent and chores. And my experience is not uncommon. According to the most recent New York City Rent Guidelines Board study, 32.2% of tenants taking out any form of rental assistance are still paying... Sorry, tenants are paying, on an average, taking out any level of rental assistance, paying 32.2% of their income towards rent. In what way is it acceptable for tenants to be paying more than what HUD says is an acceptable amount of money towards rental income? It's unacceptable. I also pay for utilities. And 18% of your studies that determine rental costs are fuel and utilities. Why hasn't the board done more to separate out those costs when a large portion of rent-stabilized tenants, I'm sure, are covering those costs on their own? You're using this study to redouble down on the amount of money that someone like myself has to pay in utility costs, which if you add those, by the way, into my rent costs, I would be paying more than 50% of my income. Actually, I want friends to ask this meeting the selection from the Rent Guidelines Board's explanations for Rent Guidelines Board. On page 58, the Rent Guidelines Board notes, "Regardless of Coys' better view of this argument, there is an independent and quite plausible reason for continuing to review and factor affordability into the guidelines." You have millions of rent-stabilized tenants in this city and millions of people here today, in spirit or in person, telling you to lower rents, to put a rent rollback. The first standing in the interest of landlords are individuals. Who can you stand with? Which side are you on?
Can you hear me? My name is Samantha Bravo. And I'm a member of Davis Helping Neighbors. And I work for the office of Assembly Member Marcelo Montaner. Last month, I finished my first year of college. While my college experience has been enriching, empowering, empowering, and filled with moments of growth and connection, it did not come for free. My parents paid for food, clothes, essentials, and most importantly, rent. My tuition would have been a financial burden to my parents. As a result, when I was offered employment, I embraced the opportunity and accepted the offer of employment without hesitation. Taking on a part-time job while being a full-time commuter student became a necessity rather than a choice due to financial circumstances. I was able to pay my tuition and also develop financial resiliency. But I know that I'm not the only college student in NYC who must take the sacrifice in the same way that their parents did because the rent is too damn high. The increase in rent isn't needed at all. You see it right here. No one agrees with it.
They don't care.
How can students like myself learn about independence, responsibility, and adulting if this city implements rent increases that make it nearly impossible to afford rent? Y'all should listen to us because clearly we don't want to raise rent. Raise your hand if you want an increase in rent.
No.
Oh, raise your hand if you want a rent rollback.
Let me announce our next speakers. Eden Clark, Jose Garza, and Esteban Geron. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angie Lincoln. And I'm here with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. A host, everyone, can give a hand for us, for showing up. Housing should be in our hands. It's our families, it's our friends that built these structures, that built these apartments a year after year. They push us out of it and tell us that we gotta move to the next block. Right? They keep raising the rent every year. The people on this floor get into the back room with the politicians, and then they make these deals and create a housing crisis. But I shouldn't even call it a housing crisis because it's not a housing crisis, right? We know it's not a housing crisis. Because in 2021, there were 88,000... That's exactly right. We're gonna get there, right? But in 2021, 88,000 apartments were vacant. Stabilized rent housing was vacant, right? That's 90,000 families that were denied access to housing. That's 90,000 families that were pushed to the streets, they were pushed to the shelters, they were pushed to unstable living conditions.
We gotta fix it.
We gotta fix it, right? Because it takes all of us together, showing up, showing up, showing up. So, then, they want to turn around, tell us it's a housing crisis, tell us that it's the economy, and we know that it's their deals. And we know that it's this board that raises the rent every year. Nine people we did not elect. Who voted? None of us. So, it's nine people we didn't elect that get to determine worst ability, determine your likelihood of determining if you get to sleep at night. And it's not up to them. It's up to us.
That's right.
It's up to us. And we outnumber them. There's nine of us. How many of us? 2.4 million. 2.4 million people. I'd like to say why it's been taken. Because that is wrong. Because we're not the media. If it's not given to us, we're gonna take it. Roll the rent back! 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 Roll the rent back!
Eden Clark, please speak. How are you doing?
My name is Eden Clark. And I'm a member of the New York City Party for Socialism and Liberation. On behalf of myself and my organization, this rent hike cannot happen. We are in the midst of a profound crisis, as many other speakers have addressed. With this increase, you are throwing fuel on a conflagration. How many of us are already facing hard or impossible choices? As of 2022, this city has the highest cost of living in the world. We've had an inflation rate that is double or triple what it normally is. We've seen the cost of groceries grow almost as much as 8% per month this year. And the Public Service Commission just approved a 20% hike for Con Ed customers over three years. And they want to raise the rent up to 7% on top of that. Can anyone afford that? When is enough enough? These problems are not caused by mysterious unknowable forces. 54% of every dollar of inflation goes to corporate profits. It goes to our landlords, it goes to our utility companies, and it goes to these major corporations. It goes to these entities which are controlled by a tiny minority of wealthy people. And they are profiting off of our misery and our agony. This is capitalism. It earns every last dollar possible and squeezes us until we bleed. We say no more. We say that we need a new system that puts human needs over profit. There are 2.4 million rent-stabilized tenants in the city, and there are 6 million tenants in this city. We know who our allies are, and we know who is trying to raise our rent. We have to get organized. We have to build our forces regardless of what happens with this vote. We have to be connected with each other, and we have to fight back. And we have to demand more than just a rent rollback. We have to demand a new system that puts our needs over profit. Thank you.
My name is Jose. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant. And I'm here to support the rent-stabilized tenants from the Party for Socialism and Liberation. As tenants, it seems like you only have two choices to take. Either live under the squall of a negligent landlord in a rent-stabilized apartment or pay sky-high rate, uh, sky-high rent rents. It doesn't need to be this way. We tenants don't need the RGV, an unelected board appointed by a mayor who is with pockets of housing developers to tell us what housing should cost. We, the people who live in our housing and pay for it, should make these decisions. From Vietnam to Vietnam, many governments are experimenting with new ways to provide their citizens with land and housing. I want to invite the audience here to imagine for a moment what community control of our land and housing would look like. Instead of a long, electric tower, we could build housing that working families can not only afford, but enjoy. Instead of a one-day rent-stabilized apartment with plenty of day-to-day expenses, let's model. We model and rebuild and fill every vacant apartment in New York City. Buildings built for our needs could cater to our day-to-day lives. We could integrate schools. Everyone, stay here a second.
Landlords out!
Buildings built for our needs could cater to our day-to-day lives. We could integrate schools, daycare, and clinics within them. Our families would slowly get torn apart as people are pushed further and further away in search of affordable housing. Here, in New York City, more than half the tenants in stabilized apartments, without housing assistance, often spend at least 32.2% of their income on rent. I know our community would never ask its residents to pay these prices. So what could you do if that ratio dropped to 20%? 10%? Do I say 5%? Not yet. We as a community make decisions on what and where to build. What do landlords and developers do for us? Nothing. We all know.
Good evening. My name is Esteban Geron. And I'm a member of the Pride of the St. Louis Union. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant and have lived at 951 Hill Street for 10 years. One of the more frustrating elements of this yearly charade is the narrative that landlords and tenants come into this process on equal footing. And that making a profit is as important of an outcome as not getting evicted. Yes, landlords are facing the prospect of defaulting on mortgages, in their opinion, because of the 2019 HSTPA. But let's be real here. These landlords over-leverage their buildings based on the expectation that they would be able to evict us. Now they want you to reward their risky investment on the backs of tenants. No landlord is ready to become homeless because you didn't give them a high enough increase. So what is out there that maybe they possibly have to sell their building? And the average sale price of rent-stabilized buildings is higher than it's been in the three years before the 2019 rent law. So the outcomes are clear. Tenants face homelessness. Landlords face the prospect of a big chunk of cash coming their way if they have to sell. We are not the same. Now, some of you might recognize me as one of the tenants that took the stage this year, a few days ago, in 2024. And those of you that head fill a council member and a group of tenants that included folks in their 80s protected a credible threat of violence is a shameful lie. You should be ashamed of yourself. We know it's unlikely being forced to be held accountable for the decisions you made. But there are hundreds of landlords, and there are millions of us. And we don't have to be accountable. If we want it! If we want it! If we want it! If we want it! If we don't get 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 it!
Our next speaker is the fellow speaker, Anna Reyes, and Reora Rodriguez.
There we go. That's right.
My name is Reora Rodriguez. Every time I come to this hearing, I say thank you. But this time, I'm not gonna say thank you. Because the moment I walk out of this room, and it's 100%, that you're gonna increase my rent. And you don't realize that I'm already rent burdened. The people in my community are already on a fixed income. We have no way to pay for our rents today. And yet, these landlords that are claiming a deficit and they have no NOI while I live in a building and around my community, there are buildings being warehoused, there are apartments being warehoused, there are apartments being Frankenstein at this moment. And yet, shame on this panel that is going to increase the rent. This morning, when I went to blow up my barbers at the courtyard, I had to walk downstairs with a bag because there are 20 rodents around me. There is no landlord in that building, okay? It's a 20-apartment building. And where is our mayor? Is Michael managing this panel at all? And yet, nothing has happened. I say shame on you. And I hope you make the right decision and roll back the rent.
Hola buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Ana Reyes. Vivo en el área de Bay Ridge.
Hello, good afternoon to all. And this is Ana Reyes, and I live in the area of Bay Ridge. Soy miembro de vecinos ayudando vecinos e inclinados unidos de Brooklyn. I'm a member of Davis Helping Neighbors and Rite Aid United in Brooklyn. Estoy aquí para pedirles a la junta de directrices de la renta que seamos más conscientes en el porcentaje que están pidiendo incrementar. Me afecta tanto este incremento de tal manera que hace que cada día yo me sienta más cansada de trabajar para poder pagar la renta como siempre lo he hecho.
I appear to ask the panel of RBC to... That we may be, to be more conscious about the percentage that you are asking to have increased. This affects me so much, this increase affects me so much in such a way that it makes every day I feel more tired of going to work to be able to pay the rent the same way I've always done.
Yo estoy a tiempo con mis pagos. Nosotros no somos una carga pública. Ya que no estamos pidiendo vivir gratis. Pedimos poder pagar un alquiler justo y asequible.
I am on time with my payments. We are not a burden for the public since we're not asking to live freely, for free. We are asking to be able to pay for a just and fair rent. And something that is, we are able to pay.
We don't refuse to pay our rents for our homes. We ask to pay a fair and dignified rent for all of us, which every day, we have to go out every morning to work to be able to keep our homes.
Al igual que ustedes lo harían si ustedes estuvieran en nuestra situación.
The same way that you could do it if you were in our situation. We have a right to be able to pay for our homes without so many difficulties.
Gracias por su atención y por escucharme.
Thank you for your attention. Listen next week.
Les pido no incrementaran el incremento de renta, por favor.
I ask you to please not increase the rent.
Our next two speakers will be Jona Rodriguez, Ayodra Alina, and Jared Watson.
Hello. My name is Reora Rodriguez, and I'm here to tell you, all of you, that Eric Avan, HPD, and all of you are making the greedy landlords to become billionaires. Because they, they make the rent wherever they please and nobody stops them. Right now, they are saying that they don't have profit when they have the luxury of having empty apartments, thousands of empty apartments in the building. And that means that they don't need the money because they make enough money from the land that they are renting because of the higher rent that they make every, every, and every year is the same thing. They're squeezing our pockets when they are growing their bank accounts, and they don't care about the people that they are making suffering, making them homeless every day because of the higher rent that we have to pay. So please, think about that you are doing a favor to these people, letting them, it is more for the rent. So think, think about the people that has only earned the minimum wage. Thank you.
Ayodra Alina.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fabiola Abelino. Resido en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York. Soy miembro de Neighbors Helping Neighbors and the United Tenants of Brooklyn.
Mi situación es complicada. Vivo en un apartamento de renta estabilizada. En el historial de renta, debemos pagar por ciento ochenta y cinco dólares. Sin embargo, yo pago mil quinientos dólares de renta.
My situation is complicated. I live in a rent stabilized apartment. According to the rent history, I should be paying nine hundred eighty-five dollars, but I'm actually paying fifteen hundred dollars in rent.
Soy víctima de una estafa porque la persona que me retó el apartamento fue la casera del edificio. Y ahora estoy en una situación de desalojo por la verdadera casera del edificio.
Yo trabajo en dos empleos para poder pagar la renta. Yo siempre he sido contante y puntual para pagar la renta. Y sin embargo, el casero no quiere renovar mi contrato de advenimiento, a darme un nuevo contrato. A todo esto, la persona que me restó el apartamento me estuvo acosando y amenazándome. Además, trató de abrir la puerta de la entrada de mi apartamento.
I am a victim of a scam because the person who is renting me the apartment is not the actual landlord of the building. Now, I am facing eviction by the true landlord of the building. I work two jobs to be able to afford the rent. I have always been consistent and punctual with my rent payments. However, the landlord refuses to renew my lease or provide me with a new lease. On top of everything, the person who rented me the apartment has been harassing and threatening me. They even tried to forcefully enter my apartment.
Se te va la hija de doce años, la cual muy asustada y nerviosa. Me dice, mamá, ¿qué vamos a hacer si lo sacan del apartamento? ¿Vamos a estar sumbradas o para dónde vamos a vivir? Por eso estoy aquí. Por favor, les pido a los miembros de la junta de directrices de la renta que no menten la renta. Soy madre soltera y no podré pagar otro aumento de renta. Muchas gracias.
I have a twelve-year-old daughter who is very scared and nervous. She asks me, "Mom, what are we going to do if they kick us out of the apartment? Will we be homeless? Where will we live?" That is why I am here. I please request the members of the rent guidelines board not to increase the rent. I am a single mother, and I will not be able to afford another rent increase. Thank you very much.
Here, if you can see me, there is a line around the corner, and there are quite a number of empty seats. Could we ask our friends here to raise their hand so we can get moving members who are waiting outside? They're not letting anyone else in because there are a number of empty seats. So, you all help us out. Raise your hand if you want to, and we'll get people in. Thank you so much, Jared. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to, we're going to argue more closely. Thank you. Mr. Watson.
All right. I'll be brief. My name is Jared Watson, and I am a tenant organizer with Fifth Avenue Committee and Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and I'm also a rent stabilized tenant in Sunset Park.
Sunset Park!
Sunset Park, that's what's up. We're here. And without my, my very modest rent stabilized condo apartment, I don't know what I would do. Our city's rent stabilized housing stock is a lifeline for the city working class, but it's not worth anything if the rent guidelines board approves absurd rent increases like what I've suggested. Our community and our members cannot afford these increases, as we've heard plenty of times tonight, I think or we did, we will be. Yeah, our community and our members cannot afford these increases, and so on behalf of myself and my organization, I ask for no increase this year. Thank you.
Let's roll back. Let's roll back. Let's roll back. Let's roll back.
Our next speaker will be Assemblymember Gonzalez.
Good evening to the board. I am Assemblymember Arsalan Batenas. I am the first immigrant indigenous Peruvian in the state legislature. I have been coming before this floor since 2008, asking for a rent freeze. I was displaced from a rent stabilized apartment that I shared with my family for over thirty years when we got a new landlord in 2006, and within six months was able to displace half of the thirty-five unit rent stabilized building in my district. I have been fighting these landlords, the rent guideline board increases, and the space for stronger tenant protection since then. You are going to hear a lot of reasons why you should not raise the rent. You're going to hear personal experiences. You guys have access to all the data, but I'm going to share some stuff that not a lot of tenants share. When you are evicted from your home, there is a trauma that you carry with you. I had to tell my eight-year-old daughter we were being evicted, and she learned two vocabulary words that year: eviction and gentrification. I have been fighting in my community to try and preserve what's left of the gentrification wave that is hitting us. So you need to understand that there's a lot of stuff that's happening, there's a lot of rampant harassment that is being done on the tenants because of their imbalance of power. When it comes to the end of the workday and you're starting to get ready to go home, there's an anxiety that overcomes you. Because you're not sure what you're going to have to witness when you get home today. Things from turning off the power into your entire apartment. To things like telling you blatantly, "They're not going to make it in repairs because you're not paying enough rent for it." Telling tenants when the government asks you to stay by the mission or for them, they said, "I don't care. Use your pretty parts."
They don't care.
The landlords come to our homes and bang the door. That is such a distinct knock that it's scaring and traumatizing our children. Because the ones that recognize it are starting to run and hide under their bed. Because they are seeing these landlords stored into what they think is their property, even though it's your home.
And you paid rent.
And belittle you, talk down to you. Tenants want to be able to pay their rent, but they can't afford it. They are starting to come out of the pandemic. Most of them aren't working full-time. Some of their businesses are gone forever. You are in a unique opportunity, not just at the city, but in history, to make sure that we right this wrong. The state and the governor has failed us. You are the last line of the fence. You have the power to fix this. And so what I'm asking you is to not increase the rent because that is an eviction and that is violence. And we are suffering, particularly in the community of Sunset Park, which is dominated by multilingual Spanish speakers and immigrants, have no defense going into this pandemic because they don't have access to basic health care. So they lost a lot, like a lot of people here have. And so what I'm asking you is to do the right thing and be on the right side of history. What we need is a rollback. A whole, full-time and distance-zero increase.
Roll back.
Of any increase, no matter how small you think it is, it's just going to be too much. There's people that have a gun in their pocket and work for that and are desperate. They're hanging on with bloody fingernails for you to act. And so I'm asking you, I'm pleading for my neighbors. You can do something. You can act and you can be on the right side of history. Do not move forward on an increase. The bedrock of your city is not going to be able to take it. Thank you.
Our next two speakers will be Assemblymembers. Please stand by. I'm in shorts, trying to stay awake this time.
My name is Emily Brice. I'm a rent stabilized tenant and a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I want to first talk to you all on the board here. So please go ahead and raise your hand if this applies to you. How many of you are rent stabilized? Okay, and how many of you are rent burdened, meaning that over thirty percent of your income goes to your rent each month? Yeah, go ahead at the end. I know you're not going to raise your hand, just like Christina Smith, who apparently, this wasn't important enough for her to show up to, who gets plenty off of evicting New Yorkers, including ten families in East Village in March.
Down with the march! They don't care! Down with the march!
Next question is, who voted for you? You all vote for them? No! That's right, because you were appointed by the mayor, the mayor that received the most funding for real estate lobbying than any other candidate in the 2021 mayoral race. You pretend like you're protecting small landlords, right? That's your thing? Well, you know what the real numbers are. You know that only one percent of rent stabilized units are owned by landlords with ten units or fewer. Meanwhile, the rest of us, the majority, our landlords own a hundred units or more. So we know. We know you're a rubber stamp for the landlord. So that's why I want to talk to my tenants here. My beautiful fellow tenant, it doesn't have to be like this. The pandemic showed us who is essential for society and how it's just holding us back and wasting our time. Do landlords make this city run? No, we make this city run. We make this city run. And then landlords want to tell us all we provide the housing. What they really do is they take our money from our labor, evict us, hoard the housing, and then they want to cry about their profits. The rent bad life poor is an undemocratic farce, and it should be fully controlled by tenants. So what I want to do, we think here, we're going to keep talking to people. We're going to build, we're going to talk about how crazy it is that they want it to us that we don't have the right to our home. Because I'm a judge and we have to build with each other. Then I'm going to control this city. We control this city.
Please stand by. Are you voting?
Rent roll back. 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 I'm willing to speak to them. Right now, they don't exist to me. Because they shouldn't exist. They're an undemocratic, unelected board.
And not wanted. And they don't care.
And they actually don't get consequence.
Because in an ideal system, in a future that hopefully we will soon build together, we will have nine tenants up there, people who are sitting here. Those barriers won't exist because we won't do nothing to keep our, something apart between us. What a shame. You call yourselves human, you call yourselves a fellow human being, divide us like this.
They don't care.
Another reason I am willing to speak to them is because they have lost their identity. Maybe all of the two at the end. I hope. Their goal is to protect people who want to grind us down until we are dust. They don't care if we end up on the streets. They don't care if we have to work on another full-time job to make sure our kids have food, to make sure our children don't end up in shelters, to make sure they have notebooks and pencils and supplies for their school, to make sure they have a chance of going to college. They have no interest in it. the most funding for real estate lobbying than any other candidate in the 2021 mayoral race. You pretend like you're protecting small landlords, right? That's your thing? Well, you know what the real knockbacks are. You know that only one percent of rent stabilized units are owned by landlords with ten units or fewer. Meanwhile, the rest of us, the majority, our landlords own a hundred units or more. So we know. We know you're a rubber stamp for the landlord. So that's why I wanna talk to my tenants here. My beautiful fellow tenant, it doesn't have to be like this. The pandemic showed us who is essential for society and how it's just holding us back and wasting our time. Do landlords make this city run? No, we make this city run. We make this city run. And then landlords wanna tell us, oh, we provide the housing. What they really do is they take our money from our labor, evict us, hoard the housing, and then they wanna cry about their profits. The rent bailout plan is an undemocratic farce and it should be fully controlled by tenants. So what I wanna do, we're gonna keep talking to people. We're gonna build. We're gonna talk about how crazy it is that they want us and we don't have the right to our home. So that I'm a champion, we have to build with each other. Then I'm gonna control this city. We control this city.
I'm willing to speak to New Yorkers. Right now, they don't exist to me. Because they shouldn't exist. An undemocratic, unelected board.
And not wanted.
And they don't care.
Because in an ideal system, in a future that hopefully we will soon build together, we will have nine tenants up there, people who are sitting here. Those barriers won't exist because we won't do nothing to keep our something apart between us. What a shame. You call yourselves human. You call yourselves a fellow human being and divide us like this. Another reason I am willing to speaking to them is because they have lost their identity. Maybe all of the two at the end. I hope. Their goal is to protect people who want to grind us down until we are dust. They don't care if we end up on the streets. They don't care if we have to work another full-time job to make sure our kids have food, to make sure our children don't end up in shelters, to make sure they have notebooks and pencils and supplies for their school, to make sure they have a chance of going to college. They have no interest in it. And because, again, they do not, they no longer have their hearts. They replace their hearts with something called profit. They're machines. They're not people. They're machines. Their only interest is to make more than a weird drain paper. You don't even use that much of your energy. I want to see a future where we are the ones who say, "This is our building. We built it." "This is our building. We're gonna feed and take care of our children." But that's not gonna happen the way things are right now. And there's a rule for the way things are right now. That thing is called capitalism. We need a new system where they can keep their hearts. They're victims. They're victims. The truth is, they're victims too. We want a system where we all get to keep our hearts and we all get to keep each other together in community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a stabilized tenant in Park Slope. So I have neighbors with some of you. And I'm here to speak in solidarity with my fellow tenants. You've heard a lot about the numbers in New York City about housing and about how the choices you make next week are going to further the homeless crisis, lead to more evictions. It's June and I want to speak specifically to how the housing crisis and the high cost of living affects the queer community, my community and my chosen community. And that we are also stabilized tenants who are working so well to speak. New York City is a place where we can find community, relative safety, build a thriving life. One of the things I love about my home is that I'm really close to gingers, which is one of the nineteen lesbian bars. There's not a lot of them. It's really uncommon in the whole country. I don't know if you've been following the news across this country about the laws in Florida that are prohibiting trans people, trans adults from getting their prescriptions filled. I don't know if you're following any of the news about trans gay or any of these things, but we don't have a lot of places that are safe for our community. And it's not just, it's not just red states. It's upstate. I have friends who, a house that they, remember friends who were, wanted to buy a house, you know, had it bought from under them because one of the people in the homeless association decided he didn't want to be a community with a lesbian couple and that was upstate. So I just wanna, I just wanna really think about what the choices you make, how it impacts all of us in this room, and specifically also how it impacts the queer community and the trans community because this is our home. We want to stay here.
Hi, everybody. So I heard that there were some landlords and landlord representatives who did not want to come to this meeting today because of public safety concerns. Well, I don't know about you, but what about the public safety concern for the seventy thousand plus homeless people that live in New York City right now? What about the concern for a hundred thousand plus families that faced eviction just last year alone? You guys are worried about physical intimidation. Well, what about the physical intimidation of pricing people out of their homes? And you guys are afraid of our testimonies of us meeting here, but this is beautiful. This is the people coming together and we are here because it is, housing is a human right and it is our right as workers and as people to defend that right however we see fit. My name is Mia and I'm with the Party for Socialist Liberation and I'm a tenant in New York. And I'm just here, and I know that the landlord cowards on this board are gonna vote for the rent increases. I didn't call this meeting. I didn't put you on that table up there. I didn't ask for my rent to go up this year because my wish definitely did not go up this year or last year or the year before. But to all of my tenants and workers in this room right here, I want you to understand that housing is a human right. Poor and working-class New Yorkers spend over fifty-five percent of the money that they make to go to rent. Half, over half of your income to pay to live. How dare they make us pay for rent to provide and live? It's inhumane and it's irrational. And that's why we need a radical transformation of housing in this system so that they can't take our housing away. We need a system where housing is distributed based on need, not we can afford. You should not make a certain amount of money to just, to afford to live in New York City. And that's why we demand no to landlordism. We demand no to rent hikes. We need to maintain control of the rent guidelines board and create a safe housing for all people.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sonia Perez y soy miembro de Cazacamino, Nueva York. Y residente en Bushwick.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sonia Perez. I am a member of Metro City, New York, and I'm a resident in Bushwick. And I live at two oh three Nikarvaka Avenue, and I've been living there for more than twenty years. The conditions in my apartment are not good. There are currently twenty-four open violations in my building and the majority of those are in my apartment. I need repairs in the bathroom. The floor in the kitchen is damaged. It's been about three years since I removed the kitchen cabinet and it has not been replaced. The doors to the closet do not open. The walls are cracked and I myself have tried to repair them. My income rate in general in the city of New York is very expensive and we are still feeling the effects of the pandemic. We, the tenants, are very, they're low resource tenants. A rent increase, even if it is two to four percent, would be too much. At the moment, I live with my two daughters and my income is not stable. I do not have stable employment at the moment and currently, perhaps seventy percent of what I earn goes to paying rent. While the owner of the building, of the corporation, Win Fund Group, is the owner of my building and has other properties in the city. We all know that real estate agencies continue to make a fortune here in the city of New York. This is why I may plead to the board that you please at least roll back the rents or have some sort of reduction. Or it'd be, obviously, a brotherly share for both me and for thousands of my neighbors that are living in these similar conditions. And of course, we haven't been as fortunate enough to be able to find suitable employment and to be able to live like dignified human beings. But not the undue stress of having to deal with paying the rent at the end of the month. Those all, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yvette Freeman. I live in a rent stabilized apartment in Crown Heights. Things are still pretty tight, but rent stabilization has given me some calm throughout the chaos of the past few years. I've been able to stay in one place throughout the pandemic. I've been able to deal with and recover from my own health crises. I've been able to provide care to ill family members without having to worry about moving every year. I've been able to get to know my community well enough to be involved in it through regular volunteer work. Rent stabilization has given me a calmer present and allowed me to start planning for the future, including children of my own, someday, I hope. These proposed increases are at odds with the very definition of stability. My salary is not increasing by seven percent every year. No one does. Except for landlords. Yeah, right. What is increasing is the cost of groceries, of utilities, of people's expenses with stupid bill payments. I could go on. We need a rent rollback or at minimum a rent freeze. We've done it before. We can and must do it again. Housing is a human right. We have all seen apartments stay empty for months after rent increases that are high enough to function as evictions. Don't insult us by claiming that this is about landlords' operating costs. They're trying to profit by making it impossible for everyday working people in this city to live safely and with dignity. That is completely immoral. How dare you?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a very brief debrief. Thank you.
Oh, la renta, oh, la renta, oh, la renta está muy alta. Oh, la renta, oh, la renta, oh, la renta está muy alta. Sin vecinos, sin vecinos, ya fue donde se ha logrado. Que injusticia, que injusticia, que la verdad no es verdad.
No, it's Monday the nineteenth. But it's on Monday, so they should have been Monday in New York. Which is fine, because after this now. So, if you must take your TV and go watch a movie.
Thank you for attending the event.
To you? So then, why do you take this? And I will be charged to it because that's what's happening. Oh, because you should know, Spanish, Spanish. She don't speak Spanish, Spanish. Yeah, she speaks Spanish, Spanish. That's not Spanish, Spanish. So it's both in my family, yeah. After it was a big thing about coming second in the league. I know, like, I think I'm dying of hunger. I really am, so if you want to hire me one day, you can do it. So I said, you know, they did absolutely it. And so then now I have the woman telling me, you know, Juliana's freaking out. Blah, blah, blah. If you need to get this guy, I'm sorry. Charge, charge, charge. It's that, oh, my God. The one that nobody showed up. Me mataron el marido. And the teacher, not that he speaks Spanish, but he's actually more like an art teacher. He just does this on his own.
Just a brief reminder that we want to remind as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their best and only reasonable two minutes for a kind of like...
Para los chismosos hablantes, por favor, permiten dos minutos y por favor, eh, para los chismosos hablantes, por favor, permiten un poco de tiempo a los indíntes, los roneros, para que tráigan sus comentarios.
We really need you for as many as you as we can.
Queremos escuchar de todas las personas gocinas.
And when you raise your hand, I do hope to hear your prayers.
La agresión a la vida es la mantiene a los chismos, entonces queremos escuchar de tantas personas gocinas.
And I would just say that if there are people still standing, we have some seats up front. If you have an empty seat here, if you could raise your hand.
Y también señores, a las personas que están de pie. Tenemos varias quintas vacías en donde las personas con las manos levantadas tienen sillas a su alrededor que están vacías, por favor pasen y siéntense.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Cheryl Sengtore, Jay Peretti, and Camila Cora. Thank you.
Good afternoon, panel. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cheryl Sengtore. I live at Eighteen, in the city of Brooklyn. I lived here for twenty-five years. I just lost my husband four years ago, and I work for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Now, my rent is already passed. I cannot see myself paying an extra dime on my way. So I'm here to beg you, the partners, please consider us, who've been living in civilized apartments and living there for a long time, save us from this rent hike.
Hi, my name is Jay Peretti. Hi, I'm from Brooklyn. Hi, my name is Jay Peretti. I'm a relatively recent resident of Brooklyn. And I'm here in general because while I don't benefit from a rent stabilized apartment, I don't personally need to because I have some generational wealth in my family. But that doesn't mean, like, just because there are people like me who have that, does not mean that we should not be taking care of everybody else who does not. They got us through the fucking pandemic, but... Got it, girl. Can you feel our pain? Alright, so also, I'm a member of the queer community and like, someone else who's a member of the queer community, come up here and go talk. This is one of the only places we can still feel safe, foreseeable future. Um, and I don't want, like I said, I am a privileged economically person, but I don't want people in my community who are not, who don't have that, which means that's the origin of every community, to be priced out of New York and be at risk of beyond, like, and be at risk outside of New York. Even just upstate or in New Jersey, where I come from, like, it's unacceptable. It's impossible to be pricing people out of their homes. Thank you.
Camila Cora. Is Camila Cora here?
What's her name?
Camila Cora, thank you. And now, we're ready to announce the next three speakers. Nora Guertero, Nathan Bravo, and Lacy Tauber.
No, I'm sorry. Eh, what was the name that you guys...
Ah, Camila Cora. Camila Bravo. Bravo. Bravo.
It's Camila, but thank you.
Sorry, I called this. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board. Today I stand before you as a sixteen-year-old of representation of all teens in the city of New York. I came to you to not only ask, but demand a lower rent increase this year. First and foremost, I want to also acknowledge that housing is a fundamental right. It is a basic necessity that everyone should have access to and be able to afford. With a rent increase, we jeopardize this fundamental human right, pushing people towards homelessness or even forcing them to live in inadequate conditions. Is the homeless rate not enough? Not all of us have the privilege to pay for a rent increase, especially during this time of inflation that we're living in. Rent has gone up, bills have gone up, basic at-home necessities have gone up, and what now? Rent might be going up too? We have to stop this. I have to stop seeing my parents argue about whether or not there's enough money on the table. I have to stop draining myself with the thought that I might not be able to finish my high school years because even though this is one of my biggest dreams, I might have to give it up in order to be able to work and help out my parents with the financial problems going on. Because even the worry about having enough money hurts not only them but me because even the routine that I am, I am willing to give up anything in order to see my parents not struggle. No teen should be going through this, but the reality is many are. I met friends who have quit school to turn their lives into a nine-to-five job just to be able to support their parents with money. Just imagine how many more teens would have to go through this exact path with a rent increase. Teens shouldn't have to go through this. They shouldn't have to change their life in order to help out their parents. They belong in schools and should be only worried about their education and not the financial problems that would be caused by a rent increase. Therefore, I, as a teen, implore you that there should be a lower rent increase this year. Think about us teens and the effects this will bring to not only us as an individual, but our mental health as well as our parents. Thank you.
I'm an ass. I can go up to the door. Okay, um, good afternoon. My name is Nora Guertero. I'm a member of...
No, it's not. It's not.
Um, good afternoon. My name is Nora Guertero. I'm a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors.
Good afternoon. My name is Nora Guertero and I am a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors.
A minute of rent, de venta, todo está muy caro, la comida, el transporte. A pesar de que ya no estamos en pandemia.
A rent increase affects me because everything is expensive, like food and transportation, even though we are not in a pandemic.
Te quiero dar un momento a la venta cuando muchos no tienen ni siquiera lo más, como el agua caliente y calificación.
Uh, they want to get a rent increase even though many people do not have the basics such as heat and hot water.
Nueva York renta ha sido una de las oportunidades. Antes, los hijos cumplían dieciocho años y desean su propio apartamento y vivir independientemente, pero muchos siguen viviendo con sus padres.
Our children, I'm sorry, um, New York City is a city of opportunities. Before our children turn eighteen, they wish for their own apartment and to live independently, but many still continue living with their parents.
Y siguen según el ejemplo. Ellos no quieren irse ya que saben que no van a poder pagar una renta o su escuela.
My children, for example, do not want to leave because they know that they won't be able to pay for their rent in college.
Nosotros necesitamos un apartamento más grande, pero no podemos mudarnos porque la renta se está superalta. Un apartamento de tres cuantos está en dos mil quinientos o más.
We need a bigger apartment, but we cannot move because the rent is super high. Now, a three-bedroom apartment is two thousand five hundred dollars a month or more.
Seguimos, seguimos por la vivienda. Hay familias que comparten el apartamento con otras familias para ahogar dinero.
We are still in the same housing crisis. There are families living with other families to be able to save money.
Me he perdido juegos de mis hijos, de mi hijo porque tengo que trabajar.
I have this much on soccer games because I need to work.
Los caseros hacen un aumento de renta cuando va a venir los apartamentos.
Landlords want an increase when they do not make repairs to the apartments.
Nosotros, los padres, estamos perdiéndonos los años maravillosos con nuestros hijos ya que tenemos que trabajar para poder pagar la renta que ustedes quieren aumentar.
Us parents, we are missing out on these wonderful years with our children because we need to work to pay the rent that you guys want to increase.
Thank you so much. Muchas gracias.
I want to say, I would like to say thank you to you.
Pero no, porque antes ustedes van a aumentar la renta o que nosotros les digamos que no.
But I won't because I know you guys are going to raise the rent even if we ask you not to.
Hi, my name is Nathan Bravo Guertero and I am here to talk about why you should not raise the rent. I'm a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors and Tennis United of Brooklyn. I started in middle school this year and I started to play football. I love football and I enjoy going to the park to play. But my dad works around it, so he doesn't take me to the park as much as I want to go. I don't spend a lot of time with friends and family. If you raise the rent, then families won't have enough time for their kids. The kids will do great things in life, but the parents won't be there to see it because they need to make money to pay the rent. I don't want a rent increase, so I'll raise the rent.
Um, my name is Lacy Tauber. I'm here to testify on behalf of Brooklyn Borough President and Attorney Lee Nelson and in turn, on behalf of Brooklyn tenants. Um, members of the board, I don't have to tell you that times are hard and Brooklynites are struggling. You're hearing it here tonight. Um, almost thirty percent of Brooklyn tenants are severely rent burdened, paying fifty percent of their income or more on rent. We're talking hundreds of thousands of people, including rent regulated tenants, right here in this borough, who are choosing between paying their rent and affording essentials. And now they're proposing an additional rent increase on top of last year's, which was already the largest in a decade. Meanwhile, the situation isn't improving. Inflation is increasing the cost of everything else, making it harder to make ends meet. Um, rents are going up. There is a rent housing, thousands of rent regulated units, and housing construction is basically stalled. Meaning that tenants are displaced or evicted. It's very hard for them to find somewhere else to live in their community, this borough, or the illness city. Um, tenants who face eviction because they can't afford these increased rents are also unlikely to receive the representation and housing court to which they are entitled. Again, the eviction unfortunately happens to define a shelter system that has been stretched thin by the microhouses and the city's inability to successfully connect long-term shelter residents to permanent housing. Uh, now is not the time to add our burden to the backs of our city's renters. We need smart policies that add truly affordable housing in our communities and keep people within their homes. Instead, leadership in Albany and locally continue when you fail to act to address the housing crisis. So I'm here to ask you to act to reject the proposed rent increases and protect communities in Brooklyn and across the city. And I also just want to add that today you should have also received a letter from the Borough Presidents of Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens, and the Bronx expressing their political position. So the people, thank you guys, and I'm going to be honest with you. Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Preet Puran, Melvin Rivera, and alongside of the venue this far.
Is it the Shire Puran right now?
Um, Preet Puran, yes, please.
Shire, let's go.
You know, a lot of us were out there for three hours waiting up there. A lot of you were there, weren't you? They had made us come here, wait in line for three hours to come up here because they were expecting for us to be too tired after our work day to show up here. But we are not tired. They are expecting our voices to be silent when we got here, who are like us to be broken, but our voices are not broken and our wheels are not bent. They tell us that they need to increase the rent to do repairs because of inflation. What exactly is inflation? But they themselves and their friends who have increased the prices of goods, of groceries, of medicine, of products that they have already made more and more profits than they have ever made before, and now they have the audacity to ask us to pay for their more profits? Who's standing in these towers? You sit here, time and time again, supposedly public members, I mean, of course, the landlord beaches, we know who they are. But the supposedly public members, you sit here and people, people come here and pour their hearts out and year after year, year after year, you still decide to vote on a rent increase. You keep your stoic faces and behind them you hide your corruptness. So I listen up to you corrupt, but for traitors that we speak, we speak to our people. We speak to our people who have waited here and who are here in strength. There were hundreds of us out there today. There were thousands of us already mobilized. But we know damn well that we are not hundreds. We are not even thousands. We are the millions. We are the tide and we cannot be stopped. The landlords have already said to each other, "Do not show up here" because they are scared of us. Let's give them something to be scared of because the people united. The people united. The people united.
Melvin Rivera.
Pay attention next time, please. Stop looking at your phone.
Alright, um, my name is Melvin Rivera. I'm a longtime resident of Bushwick, Brooklyn. Born and raised, and we accepted a lot of transportation. And here today, I witnessed a lot of testimonies from different populations, right? And it's beautiful to see you all here today. What we witnessed here today is people who are young, saying they earn seventy thousand and with three weeks can afford the rents. We witnessed working families who are working two, three multiple jobs to pay the rents, suffering quality of life issues because they cannot raise their children and they are rent burdened and we're suffering. Here we are faced with another rent restructuring of an increase of seven percent. We can't afford to pay what we're paying now. What we need is actual rollback. We don't need to freeze the debt. When I look at New York City, I don't see a city of equity. We have HDFCs that are failing, right? I don't see homeownership opportunities. We have senior programs that are telling people, referees programs, that are telling seniors if they make over fifty thousand dollars, they can't qualify. But minimum wage should be fucking fifty thousand dollars. There's so many programs that we have to address. The poverty rate from guy rights is eight thousand for a single person. It has not been moved in fucking decades, alright? There's so many issues that we have to address in the public sector. And the person who appointed y'all doesn't know how to lead. We have, uh, uh, we have a homeless crisis and there's no shelters for these people who are bound to go into shelters because of eviction because we have asylum seekers right now. So where are we going to put these people? Exactly. So, when you're gonna say that you're the last side of the fence, we're not the last side of the fence. We are. And what we need to do is take back the streets. I would love to see something out of the city, from the city of New York, right? I would love to see that. When we go into these motherfuckers houses and fucking drag them out. Fight, fight, fight. Housing is a human right.
I see. Thank you. The next speaker, alongside of the venue this far. Alright, we're going to our next speaker. The next speaker will be Councilmember Nathan Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And first I want to just thank y'all for coming, making your voices heard. The tenement movement is real. And I want to thank the Neighbors' Guide Lines Board for listening to us tonight. She said it, I didn't say it. Well, I'm a council member this day, so I also want to welcome you all to the Thirty Third Council District. It's good to have you in so great. It's good to have you back on the board. People in our district want to afford tenants based majority of their income in rent every single month. Around the city, it's a third of tenants. But if you go up to local communities in the West Bronx, like the West, like, purely the San Francisco district, our council's housing chair, a majority of tenants pay a majority of their income in rent each and every month. It's shameful. It's unsustainable. And to add a seven percent rent increase over the next two years...
To your income!
Is just absolutely unacceptable. There are too many tenants right now who are holding on by a thread. And to add seven percent rent increase would literally push them out of their homes to a shelter system that's very C D C's. We cannot afford for that to happen.
You don't care.
They better listen. They better care. This is Mayor Adams, right? I'm on the board and we're sending a message to men and to each and every one of you that you got ready. It breaks my heart to show up at tenants' homes who are struggling to get by, to talk to them at their doorstep, and they are choosing every month, these are folks in rent regulated houses who are choosing every month between affording their healthcare, paying for food, and getting by on their own. And you're going to tell me that you need to increase the rent somewhat for two reasons. Because of inflation and because landlord costs are gone. But I want you to rethink it for two different reasons. One, this rent guidelines board made the wrong decision last year by increasing rents at five percent over two years, the largest increase we've experienced in nearly a decade. That rent increase that you already pushed on to tenants should more than sustain keeping rents flat even this year. Secondly, the way guidelines board failed to consider each and every tenant is the ability of tenants to pay. It is not part of the calculation. It is not part of the process and should be because the working people in New York City are struggling and struggling hard. We do not have the resources to afford a massive rent increase like you all are considering. It has to be stopped. The tenants of New York City have to stay in their, deserve to stay in their homes. We cannot, we cannot allow for this eviction crisis to worsen. We cannot allow for our shelters to grow. People deserve to stay in their homes. Keep them in their homes. Freeze rents. Thank you very much.
Our next three speakers will be Aniga Bonilla, Lamar Mahaj, and Chidai Forman.
Where do you think teacher went? Where do you think Mark's marker slipped?
What's funny?
What's funny? Come on, hold up. Why wasn't it? Yeah, share it with us.
Uh, mi nombre es Anaya Bonilla. Soy inmigrante, soy latina, soy madre, soy miembro de la comunidad activista que está luchando por los derechos de la comunidad, pero también soy afectada por lo que está pasando en nuestra comunidad actualmente.
My name is Anaya Bonilla. I am an immigrant. I am Latin. I am a mother. I am a member of this community. I am an activist and I'm also somebody who's trying to help the people who are affected in this community.
Tengo dos décadas viviendo acá en Brooklyn, Nueva York, y dos de mis hijos han nacido acá en los Estados Unidos y mi hijo mayor tiene la mayor parte de su vida también viviendo acá.
I have two children. I've been residing here, two decades, I'm sorry, living in Brooklyn. I have, uh, two children. Uh, my eldest son has been living the majority of his life here.
Actualmente estoy cruzando mi tercer año en la universidad para derecho a recursos humanos porque quiero hacer la diferencia, porque yo sé el día a día de mi comunidad y todos los desafíos que ellos enfrentan cada día. Levantándose temprano, trabajar, acostarse cansado, porque no tenemos otra manera. Yo tengo que trabajar el triple para ir a nivel de mis compañeros en la universidad.
Uh, so I am currently in my third year in university studying to become, uh, studying human resources because I want to make a difference in my community. I know the people are working day to day and I understand, uh, how hard it is, how difficult it is for these people that have to work every day and have to get up very early in the morning and go to bed late at night to be able to afford, uh, to live in the city. And also, I myself have to work three times as hard to be able to get what my other universities, uh, uh, the other people at my university have already.
Hoy estoy acá porque quiero ser la voz de las madres, de los padres, de los jóvenes que no tienen ese privilegio de haber dejado día de trabajo, de dejar hora de trabajo para estar acá porque hay madres que no tenían quien cuidar a sus tíos, porque hay jóvenes que no podían quedarse solos en la casa y hoy estoy asando la voz por ellos y les pido a ustedes que por favor escuchen la voz de una comunidad en lloro de una comunidad que les pide que no suba la renta.
Uh, so I'm here today because I want to be the voice of the mothers and the fathers and the young people who don't have the privilege to be able to lose a day of work, to lose hours of work to come here. Mothers who didn't have anybody to take care of their children, young people who couldn't leave their homes. I want to be their voice, the voice of a community, a community that's asking for help.
Estoy trabajando y tengo trabajo, estudio, tiempo completo gracias a una veta que recibí y me pierdo mucho tiempo importante. Es muy confortable llegar a casa, quitarse los zapatos, acostarse en el sofá, agarrar fuerza y empezar a preparar la cena y sentarse y tener una cena, un momento con la familia. and that is important, not because they don't want to, but because they can't. So I ask you to, please, be conscious and not allow a child to go to bed without food, deprive a child to spend time with their family, and this is impacting their education, their mental health, and our mental health as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm full-time and also go to school because of a scholarship, full-time because of a scholarship that I received. And so I wish I had time to take off my shoes, to lay down on the sofa, to, you know, get strength to be able to get up and prepare my food and make dinner, and sit down with my family, and spend time with my children and ask them how they're doing in school. But that time that I'm spending with my children is very limited. And it's also difficult because you're thinking about this next payment that you have to make. There's many single mothers that are the only people that are supporting their family. This is very emotional because they're not able to spend time with their children, and that is important, not because they don't want to, but because they can't.
So I ask you to, please, be conscious and let them not permit that their children spend the same time as their family that they're going to repay. And that can impact the education of them and the mental health of them, and of us too. Thank you for listening.
So my last rule is to be conscious, not allow a child to go to bed without food, to deprive a child to spend time with their family, and this is impacting their education, their mental health, and our mental health as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Omar Khaj. I've lived in New York my entire life, born and raised on the Upper West Side. I've been living there until 2020 when I started renting, and just this last spring I moved for the third time in four years. Like everyone else here, we understand that the rental market in the city has absolutely spiraled out of control over the last two years. It's become fucking absurd. I want to remind you that the decisions that this board makes on rent stabilized units has a ripple effect on the entire market and affects all of us. I'd remind you that New York is great not for its buildings, but for the people who fill them. For landlords, for the landlord to represent these rent increases are a chance to grow investment. They're just a way to ensure that numbers on a spreadsheet grow. For us people, for everybody in here, these are life-changing decisions you're handing us. Whether or not we can continue to live in our home, whether or not we can save money at all or be forced to spend our savings early, whether or not someone needs to go back to work and increase their hours like you've heard countless times tonight. For families, these choices only become more difficult. So I implore you to remember your humanity and to vote against rent increases and for a rent rollback. Please vote in the interest of the people that make this city great. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Chirway Foreman.
Have a heart!
Buy one!
Good evening. My name is Chirway Foreman, and I've been a resident of New York City for well over a decade. In March 2020, the weekend before the first COVID-19 lockdown, I moved into a rent-stabilized unit in the Harlem area, and I've been there ever since. Over time, as things have opened up, I've gotten to know more about my neighbors and their stories. I've noticed a tiny, tiny guy. I'm losing more and more of my fellow New Yorkers, especially the elderly ones, as they can no longer afford to live here. I'm not here to testify as a tenant who cannot afford these hard changes. I'm here because I know there are people in this room right now and in our communities who can't afford rent increases of two, or the unconscionable seven percent. I'm fighting for them and I'm pleading with the Rent Guidelines Board. Hear me as I speak. If these rent increases happen, the culture that makes the city unique will continue to dissipate as we displace thousands and thousands of people out of the city.
That's right.
New York, a cultural juggernaut for music and art and theater and fashion, much more, will no longer be recognizable in the coming years. The landlord is not the bedrock of the culture, it's the tenants in this room that make this city. The city controls rent hikes by the rationale of increased maintenance costs, mortgage, interest rates, and inflation. However, renters are also feeling the brunt of this increased inflation. Really, nine, sorry, fifty-five percent surveyed full-time workers say that even with a pay raise or a higher-paying job, their income does not keep up with inflation. Your own data says that between 2021 and 2022, evictions went up three thousand percent. The Rent Guidelines Board believes that wages will go up two point three percent. How does that work if rents go up possibly four percent, but even seven percent? Who will cover that gap? So renters in this imagined world are not keeping up with inflation. Who is supposed to help pay these rents? Will the city provide some kind of voucher system? Will the city provide any sort of support? Will renters choose between rent, or food, or medical care, and any other expenses that come up? If the rent hikes go into place, how will city-owned rent-stabilized landlords and management companies accountable for delayed and often inadequate repairs and maintenance? A neighbor in my neighborhood had a whole home for twenty-five years for this exact reason. The intercons system of her Section Eight housing requirement didn't work for the entire line of the building. After three to four months of official complaints, it was not fixed in time. She lost her housing and lived after twenty-five years. I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna tomorrow, I'm gonna finish. I used to believe that both sides of the negotiations walk away with some grain. But in this situation, landlords have so much power over tenants that has hurt all night. I cannot give faith, ask for a minimum increase. I demand a no-rent increase and beg you to have a rent rollback.
Our next speaker is Andrea Powers. Thank you. Our next speakers were Andrea Powers, Alvin Marcus, and Roya Menes.
Can I stay awake this time?
Stay off your phone!
Andrew! Stay off your phone! He's still on it. Look up, we're talking to you.
My name is Lea Powers, and I live in a rent-stabilized apartment in Bed-Stuy. It took me forever to get to the city, and I don't want to leave because of how at home I feel now. I can be my full, non-binary self here. People know what a biracial black femme looks like here. I am accepted and loved by my friends. It took me about forever also to figure out that my apartment was rent-stabilized. I have a whole-ass PhD, and it took me about half a day in total to figure that out. I started searching because when I was finally feeling settled, the lease was coming due, that anxiety is a lot. Do you ever feel that anxiety over if you're going to be able to afford your rent? No.
No. I don't.
So why are you making these decisions on behalf of other tenants who do feel that anxiety? My rent went up from thirty to thirty-one percent of my income. Search results reveal that my rent was rent-stabilized, but it feels like it's anything but. I thought three point five percent would have been enough for y'all. It's a wild concept that people who don't experience economic anxiety even need that. And then I heard that y'all want even more. It's a shame. I'm putting together what my life will look like years from now, and rent increases makes that look pretty unstable. I started a new job where I will be able to afford this, but so many in this crowd, my fellow tenants, won't be. Will I be able to own a home or even an apartment here in the city that I finally made it to? I have no idea. We've heard from countless others the horrible questions and decisions they'll have to make if these increases go into effect. So I urge you, please, do not raise the rent. Roll back.
Good night. My name is Amelie Marcus. I'm a little nervous, can you hear me now? So my name is Amelie Marcus. I've been in Brooklyn all my life. I am a kid that grew up with horrible housing stability. I've lived in twelve apartments before I even graduated high school. I'm a root of the shelter system. I know what eviction looks like. I know what sleeping on the floor looks like. I know what sleeping on the floor with mices and goaches look like. And within the past couple of years, you know, I've been able to maintain housing stability. So I'm here on behalf of, not only my story going on with the tenants here, my sister, who I throw her so much, she only makes forty thousand a year. After taxes, she brings home nine hundred dollars by week. Her rent is two thousand dollars. That's what I want to hear.
That ain't right!
Be conscious that there is to say on that side.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, please. Yeah, no, so, wait. Long time, don't speak, for favor, solo mete. Buenas noches, mi nombre es María Meneses. Soy una mujer inmigrante. Vivo en Brooklyn hace más de veintitrés años.
My name is María Meneses. I'm an immigrant, and I have lived in Brooklyn more than twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-three years.
Soy madre de tres hijos. Abuela de tres nietos.
I'm a mother of three children, grandmother of three grandchildren.
Vivo en un departamento muy pequeño.
I live in a very small apartment.
Hasta hace poco éramos cinco personas viviendo en este departamento.
Until recently, it was five of us living in this very small apartment.
Nunca he sabido lo que es tener cuánto privado.
I have never, I've never known what it is to have a private room.
Ahora mismo, lo que debería ser la sala está uno de mis hijos viviendo conmigo.
Right now, what should be the living room is one of my sons living there with me.
Ahora que mi familia ha crecido y que me siento muy contenta cuando me visitan los nietos, no tengo un espacio para poder tenerlos todo completo. El espacio es muy reducido.
Now that my family has grown and I'm very happy to have my grandchildren and to have them come visit me, I cannot provide them a big space for them to play. The space is very limited.
Soy trabajadora comunitaria y soy trabajadora de salud.
I'm a healthcare worker and I'm also a community worker.
Tengo un trabajo tiempo completo.
I have a full-time job.
Que supuestamente para el sistema de Human Resources Administration.
That supposedly for the Human Resources Administration system.
Lo que yo gano es muchísimo.
What I earn is a lot.
No puedo aplicar para ningún beneficio público.
I can't, cannot apply for any public benefit.
Me gustaría tener un departamento más grande para poder estar con toda mi familia por lo menos un fin de semana.
I would like to have a bigger apartment so that I can have my entire family at least for one weekend in my house.
Nuestra familia latina, nuestra comunidad latina principalmente, somos personas bien trabajadoras.
The Latino family, and in more particular, the Latino community, we're full of very hard-working individuals.
Muchos de nuestros hijos nos perdemos de eventos en la escuela, nos perdemos cumpleaños, nos perdemos paseos que tienen nuestros hijos en la escuela porque necesitamos estar trabajando.
Many of us, we miss school events, we miss birthdays, we miss school trips because we're always working.
Dejamos mucho tiempo solo a nuestros hijos, y esto les afecta.
We also leave our children alone for long periods of time, and that affects them.
No creo que solamente a mí. Creo que muchos de vosotros, en algún momento, nuestros hijos nos dicen, ¿acaso no me quieres? ¿Acaso no te importo? ¿Quieres estar en tu trabajo?
I don't think I'm the only one. I'm sure everyone here has had a moment where their child has asked them, "Don't you love me? Don't you care about me? Why are you always at work?"
Cuando veo, cuando veo, cuando veo los litros de affordable housing y digo, posiblemente puedo aplicar, y cuando entro a esas aplicaciones, es para personas que le han cuchetan mil dólares o más.
When I see the signs, and the signs for affordable housing, and I go onto the website to apply, when I look into it, it's only for people who earn eighty thousand dollars.
Son sobrevivientes de violencia doméstica.
I'm also a domestic violence survivor.
Y muchas de las personas que al igual que yo hemos pasado por situaciones difíciles.
And just like other people that are like me who have gone through similar difficult situations.
Actualmente necesitan estar en custodia precisamente porque no se puede pagar una renta como las que tienen ahora.
Currently, they need to be in shelters because they don't have the means to pay the rents that are, you know, permanent.
Entonces, por favor, toque su corazón, piense en nuestras familias, principalmente en nuestros hijos, en la salud mental, en cómo les afecta y cómo nos afectan nosotros.
Please put a hand on your heart and think about our families, our children, their mental health, and how all of this affects them and us.
Se que me voy pasando de tiempo, y eso es porque necesito un intérprete porque quiero hacerlo en español.
I know I'm going a little bit over time, but that's because I need an interpreter because I want to speak in Spanish.
Pero solamente les quiero decir, pónganse a pensar, si yo que tengo un trabajo tiempo completo, un sueldo estable, es difícil pagar una renta. Piensen en nuestra comunidad, en nuestros vendedores ambulantes que día a día se ganan la vida y que muchas veces solamente sacan para poder de marcar el trato de compra y venta.
So I just want you to think about somebody like me, who even though I have a full-time job and I have a stable income, my situation with rent is very difficult. But now, please think of people in my community, like the person that sells, like the food vendor, or the person that sells stuff out on the street, who with only one day of work is only, most times are not only able to bring enough home to have one plate of food.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keaton Cora.
That's how you make your money?
And Rebecca Melton. Keaton Cora. K S. Oh, sure. Okay, and Rebecca Melton. Thank you. And we have, please, Rebecca. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Just a quick announcement that they are allowing online testimony. If you go to nyc.gov/rgv, and then if you go to QuickLinks, it's the sixth QuickLink that says "Submit Testimony." So if you can't do it, you have to do it tonight, though, before midnight. So if you can do it. It's in the QuickLink section. It says "Submit testimony to the RGV." So I'm gonna submit, because I don't think my name's gonna get called. But RG, nyc.gov/rgv.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're here all night! Do it tonight!
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our number of speakers, we'd love to hear from everyone. Thank you.
My name is Becca, and I'm a middle school teacher living in Brooklyn. While I myself do not live in a rent-stabilized apartment, I am here to advocate for the hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who do. New Yorkers pay the country's highest rental rates. Despite this, we often have to face pests, germs, leaks, and other impediments to our health and safety. In my experience, many of these issues take weeks or months to be addressed, and some are never fixed at all. For the over nine hundred thousand New Yorkers who are living in rent-stabilized apartments, you are here to consider a rent increase of up to seven percent. According to the May 2022 census, a third of these units have rodents. This is almost twice the rate of unregulated apartments. These units also have twice as many leaks and three times as many heating breakdowns. It's unfathomable to me that you would even consider allowing a rent hike without first addressing these issues. It is absurd to expect tenants to pay up to seven percent more for apartments that have had no substantial verifiable improvements made to them. It is even more absurd in a city with a high cost of living, makes it increasingly difficult for middle and lower-class citizens to simply survive. Some might say that these rent hikes would allow landlords to make these repairs, but the fact is that landlords already make substantial profits on these units, and these profits continue to rise as we've heard in other testimonies that cited your own data.
That's right!
Furthermore, you are proposing a seven percent increase even though last year wages increased by an average of only three point four percent, which is a three point six percent shortfall for a tenant who was lucky enough to even get that increase. Where will this rent money come from? Will tenants skip meals? Will they stop paying for their medications? Will their children have to forego their education? Or will you do the right thing and vote to stop these unconscionable rent hikes? Thank you.
Our next two speakers will be Allison Bryson, Johnny Rivera, and Rebecca Harshberger.
Come on, Allison. Roll the rent back! Roll the rent back! Roll the rent back! Roll the rent back!
Please go ahead.
Roll the rent back!
Okay, it's quite emotional to be sitting here. Uh, how you doing? I'm Johnny Rivera, I'm a tenant organized over Brooklyn Legal Service Corp., A. I support zero percent increase.
Period!
There are many rent-stabilized buildings where tenants are living in substandard conditions. My recent canvassing of these buildings has revealed a shocking lack of upkeep and maintenance in the apartments and in the common areas. Working-class families in Brooklyn face increasingly difficult, um, time in finding affordable housing and are often taken advantage by the landlords.
Every year.
Despite tenants struggling to pay their monthly rent, they still face unfair treatment, leaving them feeling powerless and frustrated. While landlords see their rental properties as a source of profit, tenants view them as their home, a place to cook, to laugh, to dream, because housing is a human right. Even if tenants, not landlords, all real estate interests make New York work for New Yorkers. An increase in rent will only hurt the most vulnerable people in our city. Support zero percent increase.
Come on, Rebecca. Come on, Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Jane Harshberger and I'm a tenant and a city worker who lives at 34121st Street in Sunset Park. I first moved to my community in 2008. I definitely have the best neighborhood in Brooklyn, I can say that right here. Thank you to everyone who came out today to defend tenants and thank you to my fellow Sunset Parker Genesis Akino on the board for fighting for us. You truly understand our common struggle as tenants. Uh, rent stabilized housing is the only thing that is keeping more than a million working-class households in their homes. I am here today to urge the Rent Diling Board to vote a hard no on any rent increases. Any rent increase that you approve is unacceptable and will cause more of our neighbors to be homeless. Last year, tenants were already hit with the largest rent increase since 2013 from the Rent Diling Board. That was disgusting and it was shameful and we are facing a tremendous housing crisis in my neighborhood Sunset Park as well as all of Brooklyn and New York City. Given the inflation of basic necessities like food and utilities, there has never been any more time urgent for a rent rollback in New York City. Rent stabilized housing is a lifeline for elderly New Yorkers as well as the New Yorkers with disabilities in our lives that we care about so much. It is disgusting that you would even consider raising the rent during these economic times. These rent increases don't just affect rent stabilized buildings, they have ripple effects on all apartment buildings and they worsen gentrification. I deeply love my neighbors, my community, and I want all my community members to stay in the neighborhood. I don't want to see a single neighbor being displaced or evicted or forced to leave the city we love and we are not going anywhere.
That's right.
So do the right thing for New York City, vote for a rent rollback now.
Our next two speakers will be Gabriela Pereira, Lula Flay, and Nancy Morisso.
Come on, Gabriela.
Let's go, Gabby!
Me being shocked that I haven't got a chance to speak to my son, a little, talk a third, sorry. Um, so I would like to start by saying that the absolute sickening irony of a board of mostly white middle-aged men deciding on rent increases for a majority black and brown tenants is not lost on any of us. So like I said, my name is Gabby. I'm a nursing student, the proud daughter of two essential workers, and a rent stabilized tenant here in beautiful Brooklyn. My apartment is located in a building baited up of older adults, families, and multi-generational Caribbean and black households. They are food service workers, home care workers, MTA employees, city employees, USPS employees, mothers, fathers, grandparents, students, and young children of the next generation. They are the backbone of this city and they kept it running through the pandemic. This beautiful community that I am so very lucky to witness every day represents everything good and beautiful about Brooklyn and my extension, New York City. I urge you to connect the very visible dots and realize that to raise rent is to effectively maven the culture and livelihoods that people flock to this city for. What would New York be without these New Yorkers? Do the right thing and utilize this power that you are unjustly crowned with and vote no on rent increases and better yet, roll the shit back. And finally, any landlords that may be, you know, kind of creeping here today without letting know or watching on YouTube, in the words of Kim Kardashian, get your ass up and work. Emptying our pockets and lying doors is not a real job. And finally, do not forget that there are many, many more of us than you are. Thank you.
Good evening, I travel here post-Central Harlem. I would like to, I would like to give us the least visual notice with a nineteen percent rent increase of two months ago. When we asked why our rent was so significant, the landlord's response was, oh, you can't afford it. This nineteen, this nineteen percent rent increase has prompted me to investigate whether my unit was rent stabilized. The long and short of it, it was under, it was under the 421A tax evasion program. This means my landlord receives a deduction on the property tax bill in return for providing affordable housing. After involving HPD in home and community rules, we were ultimately handed to, handed a rent stabilized lease with a three point two five rent increase. To the board members that support landlords, I am here today to inform you that as a young, native New Yorker, we cannot afford the planned rent increase by the board. My landlord believed we could, we could afford the rent increase because they are not there to see us struggle to pay, they are not there to see us struggle to pay our bills. Let me explain in more details. We are responsible for paying our own heat and hot water. Our utility costs has risen dramatically this year. We couldn't afford to keep our thermostat to sixty-eight degrees because it was too expensive. My grocery bill has risen substantially. To be, to be more exact, the container of a brick yogurt I buy every week increased price from five thousand forty-nine cents to seven ninety-nine, it's forty-five percent increase.
Right!
My student of loan payments is gonna resume this in a few months. My salary will not, as a, as a nonprofit employee, my salary will not increase this year and I will not, it will not increase next year either. This year, my rent jumped by three point two five percent. I won't be able to afford another two to five percent rent hike. I strongly advise you to consider the testimonials you have heard this month from those with fixed income, low income, and so many others before considering, considering, before considering raising our rent during this inflation time. Thank you for listening.
Hi, I'm Nancy Mariso. Thank you to the tenants and the audience that are here today. It's eight forty-five and instead of putting my funeral to bed, I'm standing here finally getting some rest in peace so that my family can stay in the old home she was moving, to stay in the community she knows, to stay with the same crossing guard we see every day, Miss Elizabeth, to be able to say hello to Serena, the park worker that keeps our playground clean and safe. You are destroying the New York that we all love. You are creating a New York that is only for the wealthy.
That's right.
The dreams people come here to chase, they'll be gone because it is all of us that makes New York the dream that it is. You raise rent and push us out of the city to make more room for the rich. Apartments sit empty to make room for the rich. Family-sized apartments, I'm not talking about these little closet three bedrooms, but apartments that are built for families to stay and grow are all under limited to make room for the rich. More and more New Yorkers are looking two and three jobs to make room for the rich. And so I ask you all, why are you on this board? It's not rhetorical. I'm not asking the tenant representatives, I'm asking y'all. You were appointed, you didn't have to accept it. Why are you on this board? So it sounds like you don't even know why you're here. Because you clearly don't have an answer. When I volunteer for things, I know I am doing it. I'm doing it to make our community a better place, to make New York a stronger place. As a first-generation American, my parents moved here from Haiti. Me and my daughter were born in the same hospital in Brooklyn and we planned to stay here. Why are you here?
Yeah, here to raise the rent.
You don't have an answer. It's not to make you better. Because you don't have an answer.
No, what's going on?
Do you remember if you were being tested or what?
Right, right. You don't have an answer. You don't need to be here. Roll the rent back. No hype and roll it back! Roll it back! Roll it back! Roll it back!
Thank you.
Roll it back! Roll it back! Roll it back! Roll it back!
Thank you.
Roll it back! Roll it back! Roll it back!
Thank you for our next three.
You're in your absence, aren't you?
Our next three speakers will be Viviana Montes, HTZ, um, Chris Sorisia, and Richard Young. Is Viviana here? Okay, thank you very much.
Hola, buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Viviana Montes y el nombre de mi esposa es Juvenal Torres. Yo vivo en Brooklyn, en Sunset Park. Soy miembro de vecinos, ayudando a vecinos. Somos padres de amigos que por varios años hemos pagado la renta y no es justo que paguemos demasiado por nuestra renta y el dueño no repara nada. Momento. Eh, ¿cuál es su nombre?
My name is Viviana Montes, my husband is Ju- Juvenal Torres. I live in Sunset Park, I'm a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I have a parent who has paid rent for many years and it is not fair that we pay too much for our rent while the landlord doesn't fix anything.
Entonces, aquí para decirles que el aumento que proponen es exceso en el momento de la renta estabilizada, en los apartamentos que son muy antiguos.
I'm here to tell you that the increase that is being proposed is an excessive increase to stabilize rent in the apartments that are very old.
Yeah, I don't care.
Nosotros hemos pasado muchas dificultades por muchos años por falta de reparación, no solo en un apartamento sino en todos los servicios que pertenece al mismo dueño.
We have faced many difficulties over the years, including a lack of repairs not only in one apartment but in all of the buildings owned by the same landlord.
Además, hemos tenido muchas malas experiencias en tantos años y la renta de nuestros hijos son los más afectados. Y porque quiero que se haga justicia y pagar un precio justo en nuestra renta.
Furthermore, we have had many bad experiences over the years and the truth is that our children are the most affected. And why do I want justice to be served and to pay a fair price for our rent?
Nosotros no negamos a pagar la renta sino que queremos pagar algo justo y sin exceso.
We are not refusing to pay the rent, but we want to pay what is fair without any excess.
En los apartamentos hay muchas ratas, hay garachas y el dueño no repara, hay mucho mojo en el, en los baños.
Uh, in our apartment, we have many rats, roaches, and a lot of mold and the landlord does not make any repairs.
La semana pasada supimos de que nos cortaron la luz porque el dueño no ha pagado la luz y tampoco el gas, estuvimos dos días sin, en el vidrio, en los pastillos estuvimos dos días sin luz.
Last week, they turned our electricity off because the landlord had not paid the bill. Uh, we were also without gas for about two days and in the hallways, we had no electricity.
Nosotros, como supimos, tuvimos que llamar al tres hombres y el que venía a poner la luz fue la HPD porque el dueño no hizo absolutamente nada por pagar los billetes para que tengamos luz, pudimos haber, este, tenido accidentes.
Uh, the tenants, uh, have called 311 and it wasn't the landlord that came to make the, the repairs or turn off the electricity, it was actually HPD because the landlord doesn't bother himself with paying the bills and anybody could have had an accident.
Y por culpa del dueño por no pagar los billetes también supimos, eh, que nos cortaron la luz aunque nuestro contrato es independientemente y especialmente yo que tengo un hijo con asma que necesita ponerse la máquina.
Um, and it's the landlord's fault because he didn't pay any of the bills that they turned off our electricity because, like, it's independent and I suffered because I have a child with asthma and he depends on a machine. Gracias, thank you.
They don't even try to honor our troops memorial. Libera la mente, la imaginaria.
I'm speaking here.
I see we are on the left.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Young. My pronouns are young and I'm a student at American University in Washington DC double majoring in political science and anthropology. I first want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. I'm here in solidarity to the tenants who continue to face abuse from their landlords and people in privileged positions. The importance of not increasing rent in New York City cannot be understated. For starters, a staggering number of New Yorkers are a renning rent burden, meaning they're spending over thirty percent of their income on housing. Any increase in rent would only exacerbate this problem, leading to greater financial strain in already struggling individuals and families. Moreover, when rent prices rise, it can lead to displacement of longtime residents who can no longer afford to live in their neighborhoods, many of which are people of color. All of these are, all of these consequences can have wide-ranging impacts on the character and social fabric of the city. Additionally, rent stabilization laws serve to protect tenants from landlords who may engage in predatory or discriminatory practices, ensuring that housing is a basic human right rather than a commodity. Ultimately, by keeping rent prices stable and affordable, we can preserve the diversity and vibrancy that makes New York City such a unique and desirable place. Also, I have the second step to say, please, 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 please stick together, we are a community, we vote for this, we do it back for this. And to the people sitting on the board, just realize that you guys have privilege, you guys have power. You guys don't go through what these people are going through sitting here begging to please not raise the rent. You guys know what, what it's like to deal with families having to sleep on the floor with bushes and rocks. Just please take that into consideration and let's just move forward together helping build a better place. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to ensure that we didn't miss there and there, Chris Sorisia. Our next three speakers will be Viviana, Allison Bryson, Emily Hernandez of Europe, and Isabel Munoz.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to say how touched I am with all of your testimonials and thank you all for coming out. Um, I stand before you as a concerned member of our community and a sole mother to this toddler advocating to vote against rate reduction percentage for rent stabilized homes. I have lived in New York City since nineteen I've lived in New York City since 1999 and made a home and career for myself here. In 2021, I was picked for the coveted rent-stabilized, quote-unquote, "for the housing lottery" unit. At that time, the laws indicated that rents in stabilized units could not be raised more than 1%. Shockingly, shortly after I moved in, the law was changed. The rents could be raised up to 5% on a two-year lease. Now, two years later, my management company is raising my rent at full 5%. This increase is well outside of my budget and may force my daughter and I out of our home. My young daughter is enrolled in a local school where she is comfortable, safe, and thriving and is walking distance from our home. The school provides very much-needed aftercare, but it comes at a price of $800 per month. Between childcare and these rent increases of 5% and 7%, we're leaving unable to provide some of the basic needs for my family and put us out of our home. She loves her teachers and has many friends, and this community has been a great sense of support to me. I work two jobs full-time, for one, and then I have to work another one, and I'm a solo mom. Not once in my 24 years of living in New York City have I ever made a single late rent payment, including a small-time unemployment during the pandemic. I urge you to consider the impact of raising rents and the burden to hard-working, single parents. And I call upon you to work towards a solution that benefits everyone who keeps us in our homes. Thank you.
So I wrote down a lot of stuff, but I want to do something else instead and maybe I'll get to what I wrote down. But I would like to ask you all a question that I really, really need you to answer. And I would like to ask the audience to just be quiet so that we can get an actual answer. Alex, I would like to address you first because you look so bored and you don't want to be here and it's not touching your heart that these people are suffering. So why are you here? Truly, I need an answer. I'm waiting for an answer. That is quite unfortunate, truly. Anyway. They're not going to answer, so you know what? It's okay, pop is a bitch. Alright, I'm gonna read what I wrote down. "I have been a tenant in New York for two years. I come to you today as a sad and frustrated human being. When I moved to New York, I was aware that it was expensive, but I came because of the heart and soul that this place is said to have, and it does. Unfortunately, if you continue to raise rents, all that gives this place life will be gone. You will have nothing but your money and greed to bathe and while your city crumbles. I am not going to talk to you in numbers. I'm speaking to you, human to human. How can you live with yourselves? How can you live knowing that people are and will continue to be on the streets because of your favoritism to help to well? I worked at a coffee shop one time, and the majority of people's lives speak to timing that they cannot afford to live here, whether they've been here all their lives for two years. People are leaving. If what you want is a cold city of rich, money-hungry businesspeople, then you are succeeding. I am currently living in an apartment that is too high for me." You know what? Enough about me, I'm gonna cut that out because I'm running out of time. "I took a list to work the other day, and yes, I take lists when I wake up late for work because I am allowed to make mistakes as a poor person. My driver's name is Omar. To make this show, he expressed to me that he'd rather be dead because all he does is work to make ends meet and sleep. When I told him that he isn't better off dead, he said, 'Well, what's the difference between me and a dead body right now?'" "The people in this city that have given it its life are screaming for help. If you put this into effect, the blood of thousands of New Yorkers and adults and children will be on your hands, okay? And I also want you to consider, when you were a child, did you ever think you'd be here making a life decision, a decision like this that could affect millions of lives and taking millions of lives? Did you ever think that when you were a child? I don't think you did."
Mi nombre es Isabel Muñoz. Tengo 21 años viviendo en el apartamento y vivo en Sunset Park.
Thank you, Isabel Munoz. I've been living in the apartment for 20 years. I live in Sunset Park.
Soy madre de familia por muchos años. He pagado la renta y no es justo que paguemos un aumento más alto por la renta.
A landlord who's been paying rent for many years and it is not fair that we have to pay a higher rent increase while the landlord does not make the necessary emergency repairs. And of course, the landlord does not make the emergency repairs that are needed. And I'm here to tell the board, the guidelines board, that the excessive increase in rent stabilization is not fair. We've faced many difficulties over the years, such as lack of repairs. For example, during the winter, there is not enough hot water. And during summers, when we turn on the air conditioning, the electricity cuts out. This happens in other apartments and buildings owned by the same landlord. Furthermore, we have cockroaches and vermin, and this seriously affects my children. For this reason, I am here, I would like a fair price for the rent. We are not refusing to pay rent, we just want to pay what is fair. Thank you so very much.
I'll announce our next three speakers. But just a reminder, it's after 9:00 PM and the venue closes at 10:00 PM. The next three speakers are Ms. Julia Easton, Cedar Squar, and Tom Beamer.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Daniela y voy a hablar en nombre de la señora Julia que hizo una...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniela. I will be speaking on behalf of Julia, who is a senior citizen. She was here with her brother, but unfortunately, they are 80 years old and they were not able to stay this late. They actually had to take the trouble to come here to testify, and then they had to leave. So Julia has worked with Councilman McAdams, and she constantly comes to our... Assemblymember McAdams. And she constantly comes to our office to request repairs to be made in her apartment. When she asked about her rights, she was told to look at the guide and then she said, "Why aren't there enough tenants representing..." tenants on the board? So the other part is something that I would like to say. Every single day, our office is constantly filled with people begging and pleading that the rent not go up because they are afraid to be put out on the street. You must adhere to that, we cannot raise the rents. Cedar Squar.
So my name is Cedar Squar Lures. I'm currently a resident of Ridgewood, living in my friend's bedroom while I search for my own place to live after my roommates and I were forced to leave our old apartment in May after a 30% increase in rent. While I do not live in a rent-stabilized apartment, we both know that these rates affect all tenants in the end. And I am here in solidarity with the thousands of New Yorkers who do have rent-stabilized housing and will be crushed if these rent hikes go through. You and I both know the rent is too damn high. This would be a different conversation if this city was doing more for working-class people. If we were actually invested in housing-first initiatives instead of leading unhoused New Yorkers to our collapsing shelter system and criminalizing them by NYPD. Then this maybe would be a different conversation. If we actually invested in social safety nets that we know work to provide working people with essential resources instead of cutting funding across the board in this city's most recent budget and giving money to the NYPD, then this conversation might be different. But that's not what's happening here. People have told you today what the stakes are for tenants if you raise our rents. You have the power to place hundreds, if not thousands, of people onto the streets. You have the power to inflict unspeakable trauma upon children, families, and frankly, anyone experiencing the violence of homelessness in this city. If you raise our rent, you will be abandoning the people of the city, the people who make this city run, the people who make this city what it is. The working people who make your luxurious life possible are the same people you will be leaving out in the cold with this decision. For right now, you're thinking, I'm sure you're thinking, what do landlords have to lose? Landlords, I'm sure, have been complaining to you for months, asking for rent increases because they claim that the pandemic has left them struggling to pay bills. Where they'd be easier for them to keep apartments empty rather than rent them out. But what would happen if they couldn't pay those bills? What would happen if they couldn't make a profit off of the property they own? What would happen if they even foreclosed on those properties? They would become renters just like us. That's what they mean when they talk to you about risk. When they talk to you about risk, they think probably the only risk that landlords have for which to possibly benefit and harm it is they end up like us. Landlords are not New Yorkers, they are parasites.
One more time, another one say last time. Your citizens have a huge impact on me and I'm even more concerned that I was going to have to end with my building and my community. What does it mean for the whole city we have to be committed? There's a lot of technical arguments from landlords, rentney, and the political parties about policy on rent stabilization. But all of these ignore the material impacts of this situation on actual people's lives. For tenants, a rent increase will result in homelessness and death. The displacement of poor or racialized people will increase. Elder citizens' incomes will not be able to afford vacations. Child, mother, or worker's life or death, views of the stakes. For landlords, a rent rollback will, at worst, result in meaningless reductions in profit margins. Landlords in their backwards mind believe that civilians moving on a grassy land and poor deserve to suffer and die. This kind of thinking is indicative of truly sick people or fundamentally inhuman system. Landlords often bring up warehousing and renovations, but this is a red herring. Warehousing increased even after the highest rent increase in a decade last year. Where we have seen that with 88,000 rent-stabilized apartments being held vacant? It's absolutely shameful. Though I'm making a rational economic decision here, performing housing hostages is to engage in political and economic extortion and to try to deregulate these buildings. What are we missing in a housing affordability crisis and an ambition crisis, not a landlord-profit crisis? You have a choice to make, either protect people or protect profits. If you keep squeezing people, something's going to break. We need a rent rollback now.
Ms. Rosalia Cruz here. Okay, thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Rosalia Cruz. Soy miembro de Vecinos Ayudando Vecinos y vivo en Kensington, Brooklyn, New York.
And in my neighborhood, my name is Rosalia Cruz and I'm a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I live in Kensington, Brooklyn, New York. An increase in rent would be much more difficult for us than it is already. And it will affect us, not only financially, but also emotionally, psychologically, and even in terms of our very own health. Because we worry about trying to have money to pay the rent and other basic expenses. Aside from this, even though I pay my rent, the landlord harasses me, demanding payment for past month's rent, rents that I've already paid. Although I've shown him the reasons, the landlord continues to deny and keeps harassing me with calls and visits. In the past, the landlord took me to court, claiming that I hadn't paid rent for some months. But when an investigation was conducted, the landlord had already changed or cashed the money orders. I believe it is typical for landlords to harass tenants. Once the tenant leaves the apartment, they simply paint it and make minor repairs and then rent it out at a higher price. At one point, the landlord turned my neighbors against me with lies, creating conflicts among neighbors and dividing us in such a cruel, malicious way to harass tenants. And for this reason, I am here, so that in some way I can express my feelings and for the RGV to understand what our day-to-day life is like in this city, which is becoming increasingly out of reach due to high prices. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you very much for your attention.
Hola. Mi nombre es Mario Cortés, miembro de Vecinos Ayudando Vecinos y residente de 2923 calle de Sunset Park, Brooklyn desde el 2011. Estoy aquí para hablar del acoso que pasamos desde el 2018.
Hello, my name is Mario Cortés, a member of Neighbors Helping Neighbors and I've been a resident at 22923 Street in Sunset Park, Brooklyn since 2011.
Estoy aquí para hablar del acoso que pasamos desde el 2018 para ser desalojados de nuestros apartamentos donde nos ofrecieron la cantidad de 10,000 dólares para mudarnos. Esto me llegó a pedir mi historial de renta y darme cuenta que los apartamentos no estaban registrados por varios años.
And as soon as talked about the harassment we've been experiencing since 2018 in an attempt to be evicted from our apartments, we were offered the amount of $10,000 to move out. This led me to request my rent history and realize that the apartments had not been registered for many years.
Pero ante la pandemia, tuvimos incalibración de agua caliente por más de tres semanas, teniendo el riesgo de contagio de COVID, gripes y otras enfermedades por el frío en pleno invierno. Agregando que las ventanas estaban en malas condiciones y que el frío y el viento se filtraban.
During the pandemic, we were without heating and hot water for more than three weeks, increasing the risk of COVID flu as well as other illnesses due to the cold weather. In addition, the windows were poor condition allowing the cold and wind to seep in.
El dueño se presentaba a corte y cuando finalmente se presentó, perdió el edificio y ahora el nuevo dueño tampoco hace reparaciones. Nos acusan al punto de que no quiere que hagamos temas a HPD y hemos notificado varias veces de las condiciones en persona, por correo, por correo electrónico, pero no responde, no responde y no hace las reparaciones.
The owner did not appear to court and when he finally did, he sold the building. The evil owner also refuses to make repairs and harasses us to the point of not warning us to file complaints with HPD. We've notified him several times in person, by mail, and through the economic email about the conditions.
Han llegado notificaciones de corte de servicio de luz y gas en las áreas públicas por más de los pagos y está atrasado. La semana pasada nos cortaron la luz en las áreas públicas por el periodo de tres días ponernos el riesgo de una caída o asaltos.
I make my rent payments on time and work several hours without being able to enjoy time with my family. Sometimes electricity is cut in the public hallways of the building.
Estamos con un gran problema de terratas, ratones, cucarachas y falta de mantenimiento en el edificio. El problema de mojo que nos afecta en la salud respiratoria.
We have a huge problem with the lack of furniture, roofs, walls, and this is affecting our house.
Actualmente, el dueño puso en venta los edificios por 5 millones de dólares pero seguimos en malas condiciones de no tener una vivienda digna del dueño haciéndose más rico.
At the moment, the owner is trying to sell the property for $5 million and only wants his respectable place to live and only wants to do a second property so he can run his pockets and become richer.
Por esta razón y por nuestra situación económica que quedó afectada de la pandemia, personal de inti me quedé sin trabajo por tres meses y soy padre de familia. Con un solo ingreso y hasta el día de hoy te hace difícil la recuperación.
For this very same reason, I, as a father, a family man, always loved to do my work for three months and now I'm still looking for a job.
Económica, pero realicé mis pagos de renta a tiempo y trabajo varias horas sin poder disfrutar del tiempo con mi familia. No es justo un aumento más sin tomar en cuenta que la comida y todo subió del precio. Pero mayor aumento de salarios. Le pido a la junta directiva muy respetuosamente que un nuevo aumento por las comunidades bajos recursos sufren mucho y está peligro de ser desplazadas.
I made my rent payments on time and worked several hours without being able to enjoy time with my family. It is not fair to have another rent increase without considering that the cost of food and everything else has gone up. But there has been no increase in wages. Therefore, I respectfully request that the RGB not approve a rent increase as the working community is suffering greatly and is at risk of displacement. Thank you.
Mohammed Al Tahir.
I live in the Hamptons.
Okay, our next three speakers will be Carla Ferreira, Louise Reed, and Alicia Wilber.
I've been over there and I see houses. That's where landlord live, in the Hamptons.
Rent roll back and rent freeze to honor our children, remember them.
No roaches over there. You've been to the Hamptons, you'll see where the rich live.
Now all the most tenants think about first responders in our town.
Hi.
You see, a shame of yourself.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Malisman. I'm a member of New York Free Against Resistence. We are an anti-capitalist, anti-imperialist org dedicated to the liberation of Puerto Rico, both in New York Capello and the diaspora. And I bring this up because Puerto Rico and New York's histories and faiths are deeply intertwined. Operation Bootstrapped brought hundreds of thousands, if not billions, of Puerto Ricans to New York City. Many revolutionary, many revolutionary, the Broadway movements for Puerto Rico were created in New York, essentially young lords. And I, our organization organizes in Bushwick and we see how constantly members of the community know that gentrification and displacement are some of the highest concerns that they have. And a rent, a rent increase is not only unconscionable, we recognize that it is intentional. We know that all you landlords there, we know you're doing this because that, you do this to stave off revolution. Because we know, you know that we, like, you know it's harder to do, you know it's harder to fight back if we're worried about housing, if we're worried about our needs. But I just want to say that we will never stop fighting against you. And there are millions of us and we understand that our fight for liberation is tied to this. So I'm not even going to like very politely, I'm not going to politely ask, please don't, like, please don't increase our rents. Like, no, fuck that, fuck no, don't increase our fucking rents. Especially all y'all because you're rich people and you probably donate so all your addresses and info are probably public record on the federal election commission site. So know that we will find you and know that, know that we will find you, know that we will tear you down at some point. Fuck y'all, rent rollbacks.
The next three speakers will be Lisa McMath, Stephanie McCall, and Christina Squillides. Lisa McMath.
That's where they live. You ever heard about the Hamptons, that's where the rich landlord live. You know, I'm the roaches over there.
There are the roaches over there.
Let me out of set.
Good evening, my name is Lisa McMath and I live with my brother along with my nieces and my daughter at 54 Main Street in Brooklyn, New York. We live, we have lived here for 29 years. Our apartment currently has 24 violations of bracket, including 10 C violations, which has led. I've got copies of the current violations of bracket. Most of these serious violations concern lead paint hazards. Notwithstanding, I'm a landlord's ongoing, landlord's ongoing obligation to evade these conditions. In addition, much of our apartment has been damaged by water. I have photos of these conditions. According to my attorney, my landlord neglected his obligation to repair and correct his obligation to eliminate these conditions. My brother Ronnie currently works as a security guard. I lost my job and so did my daughter and my niece. We rely on my brother's income. Which barely covers the cost of our rental expenses. Any increase in rent will affect our ability to pay the rent or fee of rent. I actually please to go back our rent. Thank you.
Stephanie McCall and Stephanie McCall and Mohammed Al Tahir.
Hi, good evening, my name is Christina. I'm a renting member who, who wants, I don't know what that is, that's a real estate board in New York. I work in real estate, so I represent, I'm still involved, but I'm a rent stabilized tenant, okay? The proposed increase that is on my table is an increase that is usually brought to a free market unit. We are not free market tenants. We are middle class and we making it, it's, I'm sorry, I'm so, I'm shaking because I'm, I am so emotional. And I'm here and I hope you're paying attention and that you are being moved and speaking to you and I'm looking at each and every one of you because I've heard a lot of people here where their concern is their survival, displacement, and the torment that it could bring to the family to have to endure a 7% increase. I'm not getting paid 7% increase this upcoming year. I would like to, I have to get a K cut this year compared to the previous year. I'm a single woman, I raised two children as a single mother that are now young adults. My son is still living with me. So your decision is not only affecting me, as you can see I'm shaking, but it's affecting many others. So I'm here pleading with you and hoping from the bottom of my heart that you will have some compassion and understand how you are affecting the millions out there that are rent stabilized. Again, we are not living in free market units, we are in rent stabilized units. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Corrales. Luz Lucero, Lucero, excuse me. Felicita Álvarez. Rodrigo Marina.
All right, good evening, I just want to thank everyone for still being here, by the way. You must shout out to yourself, okay? And especially my friend, the neighbor in Sunset Park, that's my friend. I'm Julio Camarena, I'm a regular tenant in Sunset Park. I'm proud, I'm a resident from Mexico and I'm an advocate. I'm also a former member of this area board. That's right, that's right. Now, you've now heard from hundreds of tenants across the five boroughs. You've heard from children, you've heard from elderly. You've heard about struggles to pay for food, to pay for housing, to pay for medical bills. Evictions are violence, evictions are violent, plain and simple. You should know this. I was a public member in 2019, I was probably that. And I was a member before the global pandemic. I was a member before millions lost their jobs. I was a member before the city experienced record homelessness and record breaking evictions. And before we entered this inflationary crisis. Your task is not to just consider the indicators given to you by Andrew. Your job is to listen to the testimonies of hundreds of New Yorkers that are coming here spending time away from their families to speak to you about their struggles. And your job is to consider this historic moment and make your vote. As a public member appointed by the mayor, I proudly voted alongside my tenant advocates to freeze rents. And now, public members, sometime before the vote, the chair is going to come to you and ask you how you feel. They're going to suss you out and they're going to communicate to you what the mayor would like the rent increase to be. It's going to happen, it's going to happen.
Don't listen to him.
I'm here to tell you that you don't have to listen to him. I'm here to tell you that you have a conscience, that you have mind, that you're not robots, you're not mean puppets. You're not here to do the mayor's bidding. You're here to vote your conscience, you're here to look your children in the eye in the morning. You're here to do your job for the brothers and for the rest of us. Thank you so much. For every single tenant that came to testify, thank you for being here. The rent is too damn high, you know this, brothers.
How's everybody doing? I just want to say, millions of New Yorkers are experiencing financial abuse because of high rent. Their abuse bucket is full, it's overflowing. Don't raise rents, do a 20% rollback. Just to give the public some agreement. It's, 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 the financial crisis for people is way, way overboard. So I'm just asking you to do a rollback, a certain percentage of a rollback to give the public agreement. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Jorge Alcántara.
Good morning, people. My name is Mr. Jorge Alcántara. I'm a part of groups and I also was one of the children who was born when it comes to his protests in President Nixon, June 23rd, 1973. I was one of the children, one of the president's speakers. Sure, it would be an election of Jerry Ford, the president. And my birthday is also the anniversary of one of it. And also the anniversary of former Clinton's death. Anyway, I am also here to demand rent freeze and a rent rollback. Now, first, can you deal with, and I'm saying this, don't be vague with me. This is Memorial Month. It's supposed to be our men, our troops and our veterans and remembering them. Who sacrificed for our country, our freedoms, our constitutional rights. That means right to affordable housing and that means right to counsel on housing. So if you can, I know you, you don't have any respect for us tenants, then if you don't think of our tenants, you still have to think of our troops, rent frees and rent rollback to honor and remember our troops, veterans and first responders. You know, if you're not going to do it for our needs, you know, just think of them who still have to do it for their needs. That's what they sacrificed for. And I demand a ban on gentrification because of the ever rising cost of living. It's bad for a lot of reasons. It prices us out of New York City and out of New York State. I know that I can't officially, but just consider it's not new that I think I need to try it. Gentrification prices us out of New York City and State, it's bad for a lot of reasons. That means rent increases are dangerous for a lot of reasons. You also, you keep on hearing in the news, outside of New York City, outside of New York State. You keep hearing of increasing sightings of wild animals. And when tenants are priced out of New York City and New York State, that's where they will be forced to live. You also keep hearing that outside of New York City and outside of New York State, abortion rights and voting rights are severely restricted and banned. So tenants are priced out of New York City and State, they could also lose their abortion rights and their voting rights. And outside of New York City and State, there's no public transportation. And not anybody has cars. And some people are disabled to drive. And it's only not comfortable having to drive everywhere they go because responsibility of a car driver is not taking life.
Thank you.
I'm the king of Great Britain, British monarch, I live.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Adrian Holder.
Good evening, it's a real pleasure to be here. I'm Adrian Holder, I'm the chief attorney of the Civil Practice Legal Society. I also served for 11 seasons as a tenant member of the Rent Guidelines Board. It was so hard, Julie. The Rent Guidelines Board's stated goal is to protect public health, safety, and welfare and to prevent exacts, exactions of unjust, unreasonable, oppressive rents and rental agreements. Yet, public health, safety, and welfare are put in jeopardy by rising rent prices. For many, many years, the Legal Aid Society has come before the Rent Guidelines Board and testified about what the board's rent increases mean for the clients of the Legal Aid Society. Most times, our words were ignored. Board members' actions told us that this board's job is to provide landlords with fair income regardless of the rent burdens that were created. And we were told that the board could do nothing about tenants' increased rent burden. But then in 2015 and 2016, represented a departure from this harmful tradition where the board did not issue any rent increases for one-year lease agreements. The board finally rendered decisions that considered the full scope of its statutory mandate and gave due consideration of ever-increasing tenant rent burdens as required by Rent Stabilization Law. Consideration of tenant rent burdens and setting rents is not only compelled by the statute, but represents sound policy. In a well-functioning housing market, heavy rent burdens should, would suppress housing demand, which would downward, put down pressure on rents. The statute requires a consideration of tenant rent burdens because those burdens would be an important factor in a well-functioning housing market. And the board awarded rent increases in the past without considering tenant rent burdens and providing more income to landlords than they would have received in a well-functioning market environment. The preliminary proposed adjustments of 2% to 5% for one-year leases and 4% to 7% for two-year leases reflect a return to the flawed methodology of the past. I just would like to end, because I know I'm running out of time, you'll get our testimony, but RGB is the essential and vital part of addressing New York's affordability crisis. New York's affordability crisis is one that we're all trying to address in different ways. And I'm so very proud of everyone who came out and the lines around the block of people understanding how hard it is to be here today. Yes, we need increased housing subsidies. And at the Legal Aid Society, we're working hard with that. Yes, we need to enhance tenant protections, and at the Legal Aid Society, we've worked really hard with that. We helped write the Housing Stability Tenant Protection Act in 2019. And yes, we need to build deeply affordable housing, truly affordable housing for New Yorkers. But we also need to preserve affordable housing and prevent tenant displacement. When the Rent Guidelines Board imposes rent increases and the board becomes, the board then becomes part of the problem. Lack of leadership in Albany and in the city this year is preventing us from addressing our housing crisis. And I ask that you exercise your leadership and do the right thing. Consider tenant rent burdens and go for rent freeze issue.
Thank you. Sarah Lazar.
Hi, good evening, hi. My name is Sarah Lazar, I'm a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union and a rent stabilized tenant from Crown Heights. So Crown Heights Tenant Union started because of, it started 10 years ago, because of the cycle of displacement and overcharge for decades, where loopholes in the rent laws were incentivizing the displacement of long-term tenants, usually black and brown folks, who denied repairs in order to make their lives miserable, to make them leave. So that you could replace them, landlords could replace them with a string of new tenants who they overcharged using the vacancy programs, un-audited improvements, or just illegally deregulating leases. Giving the, you know, unregulated leases to people who just didn't know any better, hoping they could get past the statute of limitations from the loopback period. I've looked at hundreds of rent histories and maybe seen two that were not learned with inexplicable and illegitimate increases. Landlords in Crown Heights have made a speculative bet. We can buy a rent stabilized building and even through neglect or abuse, we can deregulate and double its revenue in just a few years. So the tenant movement put a stop to many of the loopholes in 2019. Go us. But, uh, but these landlords who either overpaid for their buildings or took out giant mortgages in order to pump it for equity, they are now expecting you to bail out their irresponsible choices during the feeding frenzy of 1999, or 1993 to 2019. That is not your job and that's not what's in the city's best interest. My rent stabilized neighbors and I can't afford an increase. I'm one of the people who's weighing over 50% of my income in rent. But many of my neighbors are in a worse position than me because 50% of you, even in smaller income, leaves no room for error, no room for emergencies, much less for billing in the future. If you think people are going to be okay when they get hard times, our safety net is broken, okay? A mere assistance is only available if you have future ability to pay. And it's heartbreaking to go over somebody's income after losing a spouse or a job and realize they are ineligible for a life vest because they are already drowning, right? So you're, sorry, thank you. Just, we need a rent rollback. It's, it's not your job to bail out the, the real estate industry. They already, they pumped us for enough and we're, we're done, we can't afford it, thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Dan. Heidi Rodriguez.
Uh, so yes, hi. My name is Patty. I'm part of Picasso Rosiste and I have a judgment case group for Brooklyn, for sure, Brooklyn. I was raised my whole life in Brooklyn. Uh, and that's why I'm here, because I'm here to demand that the rent roll back now. I'm so sick of seeing my working-class neighbors and families being displaced in areas where justification has already exacerbated this housing situation by the pressure. For sure, it's not affordable for communities who have lived here long-term, unlivable for working-class people, and unlivable for black, indigenous, and people of color and immigrants. The potential hikes from the Rent Guidelines Board are too damn high and unacceptable. The other lengthy board appointed by Merd Adams are entirely out of touch with the struggles facing everyday New Yorkers as we see today. With three-quarters of rent households, rental households are struggling to afford basic necessities, you are effectively webbing the city away with the people who keep the city running. If these outrageous increase, increases pass, low-income tenants will be the most impacted by this decision. This rent hike is escalating an already harsh housing crisis where tenants are dealing with the rising inflation, stagnating wages that have not increased. And tenant protections are rolling in light of the recent failure to include the good cause eviction bill in the New York City budget. The proposal on rent hike is beyond many tenants' income in a city that is getting more expensive to live and work in every day. And this rent hike will increase the likelihood of eviction for many rent stabilized tenants on a fixed income who are struggling to make ends meet right now. Rent stabilized apartments are a critical source of affordable housing for millions of New Yorkers. But our system is broken, where 40% of rent stabilized tenants are spending more than half their income on rent. This is not only untenable, but predatory and inhumane. A city that only attracts wealth and doesn't create it will suffer in the long run. We deserve, I'm going to talk. We deserve a chance at keeping housing affordable amidst the housing economic and environmental crisis. So we demand, we demand the Rent Guidelines Board decide in the interest of the community whatsoever and demand they roll back the rent now. Because, because if we end up losing our hopes, I promise you, we will become the two worst.
Hi again, I was here just on Monday at Queens. So I figured I'd come here and just talk from the heart. As long as I've been coming up here, this is probably the first time that I wasn't sure which hat to wear, organizer or tenant. Unsure of which mask to wear, trying to pick a traumatic story that I think will move you. Back at Queens, I said this is my sixth time, oh, not seventh, testifying, it's actually my ninth. No wonder I get super anxious when this time of year comes around because I have to figure out how I'm going to convince tenants that this is important and this is for them and that they should show up and still talk when they think that you guys have already been won. Tenants have been screaming that they need a rent rollback for years, even before the pandemic rents were too high. But you don't listen to us, you listen to landlords, whose business it is to live off of working-class people. Landlords lie because of greed. How could you take their pleas into consideration? How can you trust them when they say they're struggling? The same landlords that leave their tenants to live in ways that they never would live themselves. The same landlords that collected fat PPP checks while tenants worked to, while tenants I worked with struggled to keep their internet on for their kids to go to school and to stay connected to their loved ones while we were in quarantine. The same landlords that offered unknown people COVID discounts just to take them away, raising their regulated rents by hundreds of dollars and displacing them. That threatened tenants with court if they didn't leave their apartments during quarantine when we had an eviction moratorium. Who, who hosts open houses with people lined up down the block because the need is so urgent? Only to have them participate in bidding wars? So that whoever agrees to pay more pays more regardless as to whatever increases y'all agree to? How is this legal? It's not. They don't care and you don't care. You don't hear us here in Brooklyn, or Queens, or the Bronx. We're the ones affected, not landlords. To be an organizer is to have a never-ending list of issues to solve. To get out and teach tenants basic rights that landlords constantly violate, including not respecting rent regulation protections. Every year, we have fewer and fewer tenants motivated to come out because what's the point, they say? Because your minds are already made up. It doesn't matter what comes out of the poll in the mailroom. This board can choose to roll the rents back. Right now, Jeremy Davidson, you have that power. You can choose to be part of the right side of history. Right now, we need a rent rollback. Real New York is talking and we need a rent rollback.
Andy Mark Martin.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As the son of small property owners who migrated from the Dominican Republic and were able to accomplish their merit in New York, I just want to say that they're also struggling during this time. Alvin, as someone who will celebrate his 10th year anniversary on October 1st, living in a rent stabilized unit, I believe raising the rent even $1 will exacerbate issues in this city. On the brink of a migrant crisis, where migrants are getting free government resources, on the brink of a mental health crisis, where we have more people in our streets than ever before, on the brink of a drug crisis, where younger and younger people are using drugs, on the brink of a crime crisis, where stores have to lock up their merchant base, what is this board thinking? Who are you trying to help? When will this madness end? Where are the funds to help small landlords like my parents and owners of rent stabilized units to make vital repairs in their units? Where is the heart to help landlords cover their backed-up utilities to avoid worsening a third-party transfer scandal? Where is the political and human will to push for more homeownership opportunities and resources? We have an entire New York government that loves talking about being woke. But when it's time to put their money where their mouth is, all of a sudden, they fall asleep at the wheel. Let's stop these increases. Put our politics aside and start working to help the tax-paying, hard-working people of the city. Let's stabilize the city and come up with creative ideas to solve these issues. Let's not take it the easy way out and putting the burden on the poorest in our society. Thank you.
Thank you. One other quick announcement, quick transition. We will probably have time for one or two more speakers, but we will extend, excuse me, if people want to submit testimony through our portal, which is at rgb, rgb.org, NYC, slash, or it's like, if you Google Rent Guidelines Board, you'll find it, our website. You can submit testimony that way through tomorrow.
It's really hard to find you guys when we Google. Can you guys actually make sure that we have a clear link so we can submit these testimonies? It's very hard to find these dates for these hearings. Can you guys make it that way so that we can show up? So rather than making it more difficult or giving us more homework to do, because we already have to do enough homework to make sure that our tenants actually know that they have, they have rights and they are able to be heard, why don't we make it clear for the people that have been here all night and have lined up so that they can know where to go if their voices haven't been heard today and they've waited a whole time?
And just to repeat the URL, it's NYC.gov/rgb. Thank you. Great, S. Your honor, Chris.
I didn't actually write anything to prepare for that. But that's because I wanted to say what I'm going to say from the heart. And I am a nonprofit. And I am a nonprofit theater worker. Um, I'm about to lose my job in a month, um, because COVID, thank you. Um, and during COVID, I paid my rent every month, even though I was furloughed for over a year. Um, and I believe that rent increase of that 3.4% knocked me over to 60% uh, of part of my income. Um, I am just going to talk personally about myself, um, because you've heard all the stats. You've heard all the data that you needed to hear. And that's not going to change your mind. But I just need to know, I need everybody to know that this isn't just me. It's everyone in the city. It's not just even the poorest here. It's the suffering lower-middle class, the middle class, even the upper-middle class. Only one that's not being affected are the rich. So think about it, all these little babies that are in here, those sweet little faces, their lives are being affected. That's all I got to say.
What does city well? Scott. Thank you.
Come on, Scott. We got you, Scott.
This is my first time in a situation like this. And, um, I'm one of probably the subcategory of people, the people who are rooms, who are in the most precarious of situations. And so this whole idea of, and I'm not looking for a small dog from anybody. I'm not looking to take anything from anybody. I work in a position that since the pandemic, I have not gotten my, I wish that I did not get an increase or anything. In fact, I've gotten a decrease of rent, of my, um, income of at least 45%. Okay? And I, I want, I, I want to run. And so to hear about increases on people who are already burned, everybody here, myself, it's, it's an absurd quality. It's an absurd quality. Unspeakable. And I do not know what passive people behind, because I'll be your people too, what you are thinking, whether it's fun, or whether some of you think people hear about a hard route, what is quality in America, clearly how hard everybody works. Is it amusing or cute or fun? But it's not. It's survival. I don't fuck with, uh, being homeless. I don't do homeless. She was telling me, I like to bathe, I like to go, I want to hunt, I feel comfortable in my room. In my room. Just to read, to chill out, to do what, whatever you guys love to do, but in my own humble way. I just want to live. I just want a chance not to fucking pure and sad and depression because I think I'm going to be fucking out of the street. That's all.
Thank you, uh, for being here tonight and for your testimony.
I'm sorry, Chair, there's one more testimony that hasn't been called. Camila, if you.
I, I know where the venue is posing, I share the number of people. And I got a question. You are last speaker and you have to, you have to close. Last speaker.
My name is Camilo. I'm 12 years old, and I'm living, and I'm currently living in Sunset Park. I'm being raised by a single mother. And I've been living in fear of losing my mom for the past months. But for years, my mom has been worried if she has enough money to pay rent, groceries, and other essentials. The landlord has been raising the rent and threatening to evict me and my mom. The landlord even tried to break into our apartment, which is terrifying. Ever since I was little, I walked from apartment to apartment, all because of the different states that each apartment was in. If it was the ceiling cracking or no water. But it's time for that to stop because I'm tired of overthinking of where I will live, or even if I have a place to live next, and if I will have to change schools. So I ask of you to stop because you are affecting tons of people, children, and their education. And that's all.